Seeing the presence of a quorum and calling to order the meeting of the Amherst School Committee at 6:31 PM on Tuesday, May 11th. And we'll start with a roll call attendance. Please stay present when I call your name. Mr. Demling.
Demling present.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington present.
Ms. Lord.
Lord present.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer present.
And McDonald present. And we have a few other guests that will be joining us for discussions later on. We are being recorded and live streamed on Amherst Media Channel 15 in Amherst as well as online. Thank you, Amherst Media, as always, for your support and help. Our first item is to approve minutes from April 27th, which was our last meeting. They were not in the packets. I apologize for those watching at home. I don't believe that they've been added. Oh, they have been. Okay. Excellent. So to review and approve our minutes for tonight. Any edits or comments from the committee? Mr. Harrington.
Yeah, let me go here. So on page one, the first part under Voice Messages and Letters are posted to the website. It's Lamiko, not Nikita. Oh, and then for spelling, L-A-M-I-C-K-O, right? That's correct, Mike.
I think also at the top, because it was an Amherst School Committee meeting, we don't need to note that we are from the region. We just note our names. Because we're all from Amherst and representing Amherst. Any other edits? I believe also on page one in that Voice Messages that it's Kathleen Trapp-Hagen. So T-R-A-P in front of her name there. Any other edits from folks? Not seeing any. Great. So we can, I'll make a motion then to approve the minutes from April 27th as modified. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by McDonald, seconded by Spitzer, and we'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Demling.
Demling aye.
Mr. Harrington.
Harrington aye.
Ms. Lord.
Lord aye.
Ms. Spitzer.
Spitzer aye.
And McDonald aye. The motion passes unanimously. We will now move on to public comment. And we have one. And this, I'll share my screen. Actually, I'll share my screen while we're reading because the written comment is, is the, the voice comment is, the written comment is a transcript of the voice comment, but the voice comment, the commenter was cut off. So I, at the three-minute mark, so I will scroll so that folks can read. And this will be published online as well, if not already. I'd like to read excerpts from the study of Crocker Farm undertaken by architecture firm PSKP last year. Crocker Farm has infrastructural needs to be addressed in upcoming years. For example, the unit ventilators that provide heating and cooling to the classrooms are original to the building. At the end of their useful life, fall short of current acoustic requirements and offer no humidity control. Security and safety needs are not being met. Pedestrian circulation around the site interfaces with vehicular traffic. Spaces that are commonly used after hours by the community, such as the gym or cafeteria, are located in the center of the building footprint, opening the entire building to the public during a community event. No controls are in place in the administration area to limit a visitor from moving quickly past the reception and into the building. Accessibility needs are not being met. Play areas are inaccessible. Maneuvering clearance at classroom doors is lacking. Classroom sinks are not accessible. Enrollment changes aside, Crocker Farm's educational needs are apparent now and will increase in the future. The gymnasium is undersized and allows for only one teaching station. Space for OTPT is inadequate at both the pre-K and K through six levels. The pre-K program lacks space for speech and behavioral analyst instruction. The band room is small and an orchestra room is lacking. Each classroom would prefer to have access to a space for small group instruction, rather than having these meetings take place in the corridor as they do now. End quote. You have this knowledge now of Crocker Farm's needs. And while I understand some reluctance to overburden the town with capital needs for the school, it is important to ensure funding for these improvements is included in the five-year capital improvement plan and Crocker Farm children and educators are treated equitably. My second comment is on preschool. If Wildwood and Fort River are consolidated into one building and Crocker Farm is expected to accommodate 375 students in grade K through five, we can see there will be insufficient space to also accommodate preschool. Now is the time to start planning how and where early childhood education will be delivered in the future. In December 2019, you received a report by Kristen Hayes Consulting that explores the expansion of early childhood education programming in the district. Mrs. Hayes's research showed the need is greater for care for children from birth to three years than for additional preschool. She outlined potential models in collaboration with Head Start that could be explored to both expand preschool and birth-to-three services in Amherst for children who are experiencing the conditions of poverty. Ms. Hayes recommended beginning with a facilities assessment to determine the feasibility of locating infant-to-toddler preschool classrooms on district grounds. And secondly, an assessment of the current program outcomes and potential impacts of reducing the number of children who are currently enrolled in the district's preschool classroom in favor of expanding the hours of care for children. I would like to urge the school committee to initiate. So as mentioned, that document will be, sorry, I'm turning on my video there. That document will be posted on our website on the Amherst School Committee Agenda's webpage. I will now turn it over to Dr. Morris for the superintendent's update.
Great. Got a couple. So first, you know, yesterday, the FDA Food Drug Administration approved the Pfizer vaccine for ages 12 to 15. There's a Advisory Board of the CDC is meeting tomorrow on their public posted agenda is a vote to recommend to the CDC Director to approve the Pfizer vaccine for age 12 to 15. Again, it's a proposed vote. It's not definite until they do it. And then the CDC Director would have to approve that or to accept that recommendation. So we have set up a vaccine clinic for Friday. If all those other pieces go well, I want to thank the town and Emma Dragon in particular. I'll be honest, I've gotten multiple phone calls from multiple superintendents who are saying, "How is your town working doing this in the schools?" Because we had a fabulous clinic, which I won't speak about because it's not related to the Amherst Elementary District, but at our region meeting next week, I'll be sharing more details about that. The 12-year-old, you know, the majority of sixth graders are 12 years old right now. And so while the intended audience is primarily focused on their secondary students, because that's where the bulk of our 12 to 15-year-old population is, we will be sending it out to the sixth-grade families who would have access, if they choose, for the vaccine clinic on Friday, if it does indeed happen. We probably won't be able to send it out till Thursday because all those approvals will take a little bit of time. But we've done a tremendous amount of planning with the town of Amherst, with Emma Dragon, facilities, special education, many other facets to this. The family center has been heavily involved, as has Robin Supernat, our nurse leader. So, you know, it's an Amherst meeting, so I'm going to keep it there because it's, it's a smaller group of students. I think when we talk to the region meeting next week, we'll do that. I'll talk about it in more depth. But there are some elementary school students who could take advantage of this opportunity. Second thing, Kimmy Carlos, who was our keynote speaker in March at our March Curriculum Day, is going to have, there's incredibly positive feedback from staff members. And one of the pieces of feedback we received from staff members, it would be great to bring her back to talk to families. Kimmy is the, she's a motivational speaker and wellness and empowerment coach. She's the CEO and founder of Kimmy Carlos Motivational Consulting. She's a co-founder of Sister Wellness Retreats, Healing Spaces for Black Women, and the founder of the Urban Mental Health Alliance, advocating for healthy minds in urban communities. And she's also a certified health and wellness coach and certified instructor for mental health first aid. And so she's fabulous to listen to. She's insightful. And there was, again, such a strong response. One of the ideas was, great that this is for staff, but what about for the larger community? So that will be Wednesday, May 26th in the evening. We're, we're going to find her details on the time, but I highly recommend tuning in for her. The level of engagement of our staff as well as just learning was, was fabulous. A little sooner than that, next Wednesday at 8 o'clock. And this information will go out tomorrow on this. We're having a town hall meeting, test style meeting about vaccines, both vaccines for adults as well as vaccines for kids. It's an effort to educate the community and what the costs and benefits are and to answer questions. We'll send out the flyer. The flyer will have a link for questions that people want to ask that, you know, they may want to ask more confidentially or anonymously than in the live chat during the session. So we'll have that. I want to thank, there's five physicians from the area, some who work in pediatrics, some who work at Cooley Dickinson, some who work at Bay State, many of whom are parents in the district who are volunteering their time to do this. You know, a lot of the common questions we get now that the approvals are starting to come in for younger, younger children is, what are the risks? You know, a lot of questions around that. Also for adults about the risks, long-term risks, are these vaccines safe? What if I potentially plan to have children in the future or in the near future? So we're getting a lot of those questions routinely. And one of the things that I'm acutely aware of is I'm not a physician. And, you know, I don't feel particularly, I read a lot about this, but I don't feel like I'm the right person to do this. So I'll be the host, which is a better role for me on this one. I also want to thank Mindy Dom, our state rep, is really passionate on this topic. And she's going to participate, looking at it from a public health in our region. So we're really excited for that next week. It'll be 8 o'clock, 8 to 9 in the evenings. We'll do again like we did when they, most of this group was with us in August. Probably about 25, 30 minutes of presentation and, and the rest for question and answer so we can respond. But we know historically in this area, there's a lot of vaccine hesitancy relative to other parts of Massachusetts. And we want to make sure that we're providing the most accurate information so that people can make the choices they think are in their best interest, but, you know, doing it with, with scientific information. So really appreciate our community coming together to, to do that. Last week on Friday, Dr. Slaughter and I were at the, it was a town council slash finance committee meeting for the town of Amherst, represent the Amherst budget. The date changed sort of last minute, so I was able to stay for about 45 minutes. Dr. Slaughter stayed quite a bit longer at that meeting to answer the questions of the town council. But I thought the questions, you know, were really appropriate and trying to get to the, into the weeds as they should of the, the budget. I thought it was a very productive meeting. Doug, would you, you're nodding your head, I imagine, in agreement. Okay. Anything you want to add about that one, Doug? Okay. And two more quick ones. Last Thursday was the Grin Spoon Excellence in Teaching Award. You may know that in our districts, we get to honor and celebrate teachers. There's an award for teachers in the first three years of the profession as well as veteran teacher awards. Usually it's at a really nice reception. This year, not so much, but they did a great job with the Zoom meeting. And the two teachers awarded in this particular district were Leslie Doherty, who's a special education teacher at Crocker Farm, who's just, I know her, you know, professionally for a while. She was at Crocker Farm before I was at Crocker Farm and is still there after I've been at Crocker Farm. And I've seen her incredible work with special needs students. And she's been really a leader in terms of inclusion and meeting students where they are. So well deserved. And Sam Camo, who is a sixth-grade teacher at Wildwood. And she was in the new teacher category. This is her third year as an educator and just brings a tremendous amount of energy as well as a math background, which at the elementary level, you look at research, we, you know, there's not as many elementary school teachers nationally who have a background in math, and Sam does, and uses that to great effect in terms of working with sixth-grade students. So really happy to celebrate both of them as well as one winner from the region and one from Pelham. And the last thing, which will be, I don't mean to set low expectations for tonight, but the highlight of my week was today during my normal supervision time at Wildwood as a student. And he gave me permission to use his name, Oliver, who I met a couple of weeks ago just in the hallway at Wildwood, and he really wanted to interview the superintendent. So we sat down for a hard-hitting 15-minute interview. He asked questions ranging from, why don't we have green pizza anymore with pesto? To Black Lives Matter and how that's integrated in the school. And I mean, seriously, it was a fabulous interview. I think the student's got a career track. He also surveyed his classmates to see what questions they might have. So it wasn't just coming from him, but it was coming from his community. And just tremendous time and the adults were there, as was Principal Yaffe. Some of the adults that worked with him and Principal Yaffe got put on the hot seat too. And it was all video recorded so that he could share it back with his classmates. So they could also see that their questions were, were asked. But just outstanding time and just one of a neat opportunities. You know, often when I get interviewed, it's not with that much, I don't know, gusto? I guess is maybe the right word for it. But really, really enjoyable experience. And I got to ask him a couple of questions at the end about, you know, his time at Wildwood and how he was experiencing things as well. So really enjoyable. And just when I get these opportunities to work individually with students, it's, it's a real treat. So thank you, Oliver. I mentioned I'd be giving him a shout out tonight. And, you know, I look forward to continued conversations with him and his fourth-grade colleagues about the schools and why we do what we do and how we can do it better. And that's my update.
Thank you. It's always nice to end stories from, from, from the hallways as it is. Thank you. So before opening up to questions from the committee for the superintendent, just as a comment for, for folks listening at home as well as a reminder for ourselves that this Q and A, the topics that we, we talked about here need to be on the agenda or the questions need to be related specifically to, to what Dr. Morris just presented. So if there's other ideas percolating, we have future agenda planning at the end of our agenda where we can talk, discuss more deeply about things that we want to, or discuss things that we want to have deeper discussions on and sort of come back to. So I may, you know, you know, we, we don't respond to public comment. So, you know, topics that come up in public comment that aren't already in the agenda, we use our future agenda planning to sort of plan for when we will have conversations about those, should the committee choose. And same goes with superintendent updates. So I just wanted to sort of call that out for folks watching at home because we get that question a lot. So I'll open it up now for questions from the committee. Mr. Demling.
Well, I guess my first question is for you, Chairman McDonald. So just, because I want to follow the, the right protocol. So like, I have like a question that's related to the return to in-person. And Dr. Morris didn't mention that as like a subtopic in his update, but it's obviously front of mind, you know, a big thing going on. It's, I don't think the question I'm asking rises to the level of needing a future agenda item. So even though Dr. Morris didn't note it as a subtopic, would it be appropriate to, to ask?
I, I think so. I, you know, it, you know, it's, that's, that's sort of the gray area. Sort of return to school is sort of very broad and vague. But go ahead with your question. And if we, if we end up veering into like deeper discussion, then I might say, hey, let's, 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 let's come back to this at a future meeting and have a deep question about it.
Okay. Sounds good. So Dr. Morris, return in person. So we've gotten a few messages of parents wondering if there is flexibility with regards to the choice of being remote or in-person. So, I mean, so, you know, we all, just a brief reminder, public, you know, we ask parents for a binding commitment for the rest of the year, particularly at this, at this district level. So we're sort of pre-K to six here because we had a commitment to, to six feet. And that was part of the decision process, right? The parents were making about sending their, their children back. And so we can't just say anybody who wants to come back at any time because, you know, we don't have the space to, to do that six feet. So I guess my question is, you know, so as, as, if we have cases where parents have changed their minds and they're looking for flexibility, if we, if we have that space and the transportation, like on the bus, and if, if we have that space in the class without broaching that, that, that commitment to spacing, is that something that's possible? And, and what are some of the factors that you're encountering when you're evaluating these kinds of decisions in terms of flexibility? Because I think generally speaking, we all want to be as flexible as we can in an ideal world. But, you know, we operate within, you know, parameters that are, are more complex than that. So I'm, I'm interested to hear a bit, you know, from the field, you know, how you're evaluating and processing these.
Yeah, I think I can answer that succinctly without crossing the boundary that Ms. McDonald set. So I think that's a fair summary of, of, of looking backwards. And, you know, we've talked about this multiple times, our administrative team. And, you know, you, you highlighted one of the challenges was just transportation. You know, it wouldn't feel good to anyone, I think, on this committee, certainly not to the administrative team, to allow for families the option to return only if they drive their child, child. Because I think that's naturally going to speak against the equity piece because not every family has the privilege of having a car, having flexibility in schedule and, and all those pieces. I think the other piece that comes up for us that's very difficult is around, can we offer it to all kids? So when we think about students who may have other adults that work with them, whether that's paraeducator staff based on a disability, translator staff based on language learning needs, you know, at this point, we've hired, we've hired, we have an open para posting. But, you know, our ability to onboard staff who might be needed to support individual students at this point, you know, pretty challenged, right? The, the job market is such, you know, college students are finishing up and to ask people to work for the last month of the year. You know, I think it's been written, written about widely about the labor shortage that we're all experiencing and nationally, and we're certainly experiencing in the district for certain roles. So, you know, I think we struggle because we don't believe it's logistically possible based on staffing and transportation to offer it to all students. And sort of any way we cut it, it, it would feel discriminatory to offer it to some students if they don't, if their needs don't require an additional adult, if there's space on a bus or they can drive their own transportation. So for us, really, that equity piece is, is, is big and it's a hard one because you look at an individual student case and we have a lot of empathy for people who want to change their mind. But I think it creates for us a hornet's nest of equity challenges that we're really concerned we won't be able to meet in terms of, you know, staffing the schools, transporting students. Many of our buses are quite full with how we've spaced them, especially at the elementary level. You know, we redid all the routes to do that. I don't think we have the capacity to re redo all the routes as well. I think if we also went down that road, we want to see other families who are in person who want to switch back. And I think the last consideration is for some students, this would be their third classroom teacher this year. So if they started with one, they may have changed. And it, in some situations, it'd be possible that they'd be changing, not back to their old teacher because that room is full, but to a new teacher. And, you know, to disrupt the community that's been rebuilt since April 5th in the younger grades and April 12th at the older grades is, you know, we had some real questions educationally about those implications. And again, it would play out differently at different students and different grade levels. And the last thing I'll say is that Fort River and Wildwood have more space because of the larger quads. At Crocker Farm, most of the classrooms are full with the spacing that we committed to. And so there was also inequities based on which school you go to and what grade level you're in. So when we talk about the inequities based on, you know, staffing, transportation, school, grade level, and then the flipping between classrooms at a systems level, it becomes really hard to, to think about how to make this work equitably and fairly for all. You know, and, and while uncomfortable when we think about asking folks for a binding choice and sticking with it, there is some fairness to that, right? Everyone had a choice. We did tremendous amount of outreach, schools, clerical staff, principals, assistant principals, teachers. And everyone had the same equitable opportunity to come in, you know, if they chose to or stay remote if they chose to. And I think that next step, we are struggling to feel how we could do that equitably. Can we do it for a couple of kids? Probably. But, you know, we would feel really discriminatory, you know, I'm using that word intentionally because it's a strong word, if we could do it for kids who don't have paraeducator or an ELL tutor support. And for kids who do, we then need to work on staffing. And that's not resolved till, you know, right now, we, you know, there's not, there's not a tremendous amount of supply. And we don't know if we, we'd get there before the end of the year. And, you know, disrupt the last week or two of school, if we had it all set, you know, doesn't seem like it makes sense for anyone. So, you know, it's really hard. You know, I think one of the principals said it best is like from their counselor hat, you'd look at it one way. From an administrative hat and an equity hat, you look at it a little bit differently from that seat. But I know it's no less satisfying for, for some folks who want to make the change. But, you know, those are just some of the limitations that we have. But I appreciate the question because I know it's on people's minds. So, you know, thank you for asking it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Not seeing any. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Morris, for the updates. Next up is a chair's update. And I do not have an update, a general update for tonight. So moving on to school committee announcements, are there announcements from other school committee members? Ms. Lord.
Oh, you saw me on mute? I would like to announce that our next school equity task force meeting will be on Wednesday, May 19th at 6 o'clock. And the link will be published where the links are published. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Any other announcements? Okay. Moving right along, we'll now jump into new and continuing business. And first up is our update, our third quarter update on this year's budget. There's a item, a update document in, in our packet. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris and Dr. Slaughter.
Yep. And I'm just going to do a little bit of framing. We are ahead of schedule and we're going to aim to keep, keep that going. A lot of the, the updates tonight or the agenda topics actually are truly updates. There's not a committee action attached to them. So some of them, like this one, I'll ask Doug to really spend a minute or two just talking about high points because, you know, you had the information. So we tried to get it out on Friday. I know we got it out on Monday this week, so my apologies about that. But, you know, it's a pretty standard document. This group's looked at before. It's a pretty veteran group at this. So really, he's just going to talk about one or two things and then open it up for questions. Some of the presentations later tonight, we're actually just going to see if there's questions. We're not going to do full presentation for others, very brief because we just, we, we noticed there was a couple of agenda items tonight that really it's informational for the committee based on requests or based on third quarter budget. We were obligated to do this. But since there's not an action step, it's really informational. If there's questions in committee, great. If not, we're just going to keep on rolling through and see if we can keep on or ahead of schedule. But with that intro, I'll pass it over to Dr. Slaughter, who, again, just pick a couple of high points and then we'll, we'll open it up.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to present and just show the specific charts from at the beginning of the, of the document received from me relative to the third quarter. And hopefully you can see that pretty well. I'll really only talk about the two things that are in a color other than, than green. So I'll start with the one in yellow, which is facilities. That's tracking a little above where we would normally want to be at the end of the third quarter, which would be at 75% of the budget being spent. It's a little above that, but nonetheless, we think we'll be able to, to, to meet the needs there in that, in that budget area through the rest of the year. And if we run over budget, we have some, some ability with transportation utilities, which are similar budget areas that could, could help support any overages in that, in that particular budget line. The other one that I'll speak to is the district-wide special education costs are extraordinarily high, relatively speaking, to our budget. But nonetheless, there's a fair amount of that that we'll be able to, and have held off, but are, are going to apply some of the federal funds to, to support our, our district. And so we'll shift that expense out of our, our appropriated budget and onto those, those grant funds. Actually, I have a meeting mid-day tomorrow with the town finance director. We'll be talking on this topic specifically and sort of what some, what sort of funds available there. And, and what we cannot move on to those, onto those grant funds, those COVID grant funds, will be able to absorb by virtue of the savings in the other areas of the budget. So if you look through the rest of the budget, particularly in the expense account area, we have a fair amount of capacity to, to absorb some of those costs that are above normal by virtue of the needs this year. But a big chunk of that will be, will be covered by our federal grant funding that's, that's helping ourselves and other districts out. So I think I'll stop there and see if there are any questions from the committee relative to this.
Doug, do you mind if I had one thing on the special ed piece? Some of that was staff, staffing that was needed when we were in a primarily remote setting. And we've reduced that as we've back, went back to in-person as well. So just another note that as we've made that transition, some of those costs won't, are currently completed, right? We'll still end up over budget, there's no doubt. But there's been a positive impact on our budget based on the students returning. So appreciate Dr. Brady's work on that. But then we'll open up for questions.
Any questions from the committee? Ms. Spitzer. Ms. Bittser?
Um, so thank you for sharing this and for the update. I've been getting, I don't know if other members on the committee have, but quite a few emails from members of the public who are very interested in what we're going to be doing with our grant funds. And I just want to clarify for anybody who's watching tonight. So this, you were just talking about how we'll be able to take some of that district-wide sped. Is that the wrong? Yes, that's the line with the start asterisk next to it. So some of that will be hopefully covered by reimbursement from the grants. What is that going to mean then for? I mean, just because things are tracking so much lower, is that, that's not necessarily going to translate into us having lots of ex, not extra money, but I'm just like money that we could meet some of these requests that I'm getting in my inbox. I think it would just be helpful to kind of clarify that, again, this is, we've gone over this multiple times, but this is our operating budget, which doesn't necessarily reflect the FEMA, the CARES Act, and the other federal dollars that we've been receiving for COVID expenses. Could you just clarify that for me and for the audience that's watching at home again?
Sure. So that's correct. That those grant funds from those other sources are not shown in this chart at all. And so those will essentially, we'll leverage those in order to sort of pull expenses out of this chart and into those areas of funding that we have available to us from those other sources. Nonetheless, any savings we have in this, in what we're showing here that we don't need or don't utilize in the course of this fiscal year will be returned to the town. And so, you know, in general, when you're working with, you know, a budget, an appropriation budget, whether it be this year or any year, you like to come in just a little under what you've budgeted. Because if you're over budget, then you have to get funding from the town to cover those overages. And if you come in just a little under budget, you've predicted what you thought you need pretty well. And then the town will take that remainder and it goes into what they call free cash or their reserves, which can be appropriated later, but it's not available for the school to use in any other year either. So, yeah, there's a distinction of the grant funds and not just the current ones from this year. There are other grant funds that we utilize to help support our budget, our programming that are not shown here and are subject to the constraints and limitations and restrictions of those grants and their rules. And we try to leverage those in the best way we can to help support our programming in addition to what we have here.
Can I build on that and sort of give a really crass example? And the crass isn't the right word, but like, beat simple example. So we're just following that thread. This update is showing that we are overspent on district-wide sped by $650,000. If we get, if all of that becomes reimbursable from, all of that overage is, can be reimbursed from a grant fund, big F, but it doesn't necessarily mean that we have, now we can reapportion and reappropriate, reallocate that, those funds to something else. That becomes savings in our appropriations that go back to the town. Is that sort of?
Yes, I mean, it would be, you know, if, the constraint we operate under is that, you know, any appropriated money has to be spent and any items or, you know, services we receive have to be received by the end of June. So we've got a month and a half left. So anything, you know, regardless of whether it's one of these other areas or not, if we were to say, like you said, free up all $650,000 worth of overage there, you know, the potential in other areas of the budget could be allocated to other things. But again, we have a limited amount of time to spend them on. And to be honest, moving them between sort of broad subject areas on the budget would require us to come to you and as a school committee and approve that.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and if I could add just very briefly to that, to extend the point, for those of you, either you or members of the public who may be more familiar with the regional budget where there's E and D, and there's a reserve, basically those funds go into, funds at the end of the year go into a reserve account where this is a municipal district or part of the town government, and that's why it goes in. So there is no such thing as E and D for the Amherst Elementary School budget. The reserve account goes to the town and it's not available for future use of the school district. So that's what's a little tricky with the reimbursements being, coming not as quickly as we'd like or decisions about reimbursement not coming as quickly as we'd like. And appreciate the partnership of the town to try to expedite that as much as possible. But, you know, things that were applied for, it's not like there's a quick turnaround. You know, and I know they're dealing with, that's no critique. It's just the reality of the scope and scale of the work, I think, for them at the moment.
Other questions? Not seeing any. Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Dr. Slaughter, for that update.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And we're moving right along into our next item, which is Crocker Farm Long-Term Capital Planning. And I think before I turn it over to, we've been joined by Mr. Roy Clark, welcome. Before I turn it over to you all, to, what I just wanted to tee up was that this is, this presentation and this discussion tonight is because we asked for it, specifically Mr. Harrington, I think, was one of the ones that put this on our agenda. In the context of us talking about capital planning for, in general, we wanted to come back and sort of really dig into what's in the plan, what are the updates and what work has been, what work has been happening and what work is planned and actually in the plan. And so just remind, and so that's what, that's our point tonight. There's no decision or action that we're going to be taking tonight or trying to take tonight. Next year, when I come back in the fall and we begin the whole cycle again of our budget planning and the JCPC process in Amherst and for the capital planning, that's when we can sort of take up these conversations and really dig into it again about more specifically, what do we want to be adding and what are we prioritizing for that coming year? So I just wanted to provide that context for why we're talking about this tonight and what our goal, what our hope is and what we're, what our actions are for tonight. So this is an update and any questions and understanding.
Thank you. And just to, again, add to that, Mr. Roy Clark was asked to, by me, was asked by you all to put together a quick presentation of the feasibility study, what's been done, what's in the capital plan, what's not, you know, what's still hanging there from those sources. And it's really for the consideration, as Ms. McDonald said, in the future. But since it came up, we wanted to do that. I thank Mr. Roy Clark for his work on that in the midst of lots of other things that are going on in facilities and transportation, as you might imagine. You know, I think as I kind of previewed earlier, these slides were in the packet. You all had access to them and I don't think we're going to run through a presentation of them because I think, you know, just bluntly, the school committee had a presentation on the feasibility study. You had access to that and this is a summary of that same presentation. So with additional wrinkles in terms of some updates. So really, it's just to open it up for questions or comments that anyone on the committee has for Mr. Roy Clark or myself, but primarily for Mr. Roy Clark on, you know, what's on there, what's not on there. And we're going to keep this item, again, to be brief because it's a review and analysis of a study that was already presented that there's not an action item in the short term on in terms of the capital budget for the town of Amherst, Amherst Public Schools. So any questions you have, Mr. Roy Clark is here and ready and able to answer them.
I don't have a question other than an expression of gratitude for the succinct slides and that you prepared and gave to us sort of very clear and easy to follow about where we are right now. And so, thank you. Questions?
Yeah, maybe I'll add another comment to give people another 30 seconds of wait time, which is, you know, what I think is, things that are important about the report tonight is just to make sure that Crocker Farm is not forgotten about. There's a lot of attention and work that's happened in MSBA process that, you know, at least we'll look at one of our other two elementary schools, if not both. And so I think that's really the value is to make sure that we're maintaining Crocker Farm in a way where it can continue to thrive and continue to be a wonderful building moving forward. Sadly, it's, you know, we're going on 20 years of the renovation addition, which makes me feel old. That's one downside, but the other more relevant downside is that, you know, when you think of life cycle of some of the systems, there are some systems that are 20 years, you know, the life cycles in that neighborhood. So that's why it's important, you know, where we are in 2021, to not lose sight of those systems, make sure that building is going to thrive long into the future. So that's my opportunity to offer wait time and thought time. If there's questions, great. If not, we can send Mr. Clark on his way. Roy Clark, excuse me.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah, so I appreciated this study when it came out. I was, I was a little surprised at the scope of it initially, but I think it's good food for thought for a number of discussions. I think, you know, I mean, so we're not diving into the details here in terms of specific capital planning for our next FY. You know, the biggest take home I get when I think about the capital needs of Crocker Farm is that, you know, the amount of capital that we're going to be able to invest in Crocker is directly limited by the amount of capital that we have to invest in Fort River and Wildwood, right? And so if we want to be thinking about multimillion dollar investments in Crocker, it's pretty hard to commit that kind of capital level if we don't know what's going to happen with Fort River and Wildwood. And as we know, and until really all of those signatures are on the dotted line, like 100%, you know, with the debt exclusion override and the bond authorization and everything is completely set and the next building project passes and it hopefully takes care of both Fort River and Wildwood, we're not going to know for a few years yet whether we have a much bigger capital bill that's going to hit us, right? Because if, I don't like to think about negatively, but, you know, I do sort of also like to disaster plan. And we would be in a pretty serious capital need situation, in my opinion, if the building project fails because of the pent-up need, just keep the lights on and the doors open in a safe way at Fort River and Wildwood. You know, I don't think I need to tell anybody else to hear about that. And, you know, and so that obviously directly affects what's going to be available in the future for Crocker, right? And so there's urgent needs that we've put in the capital plan every year for Crocker and we continue to talk about that at JCPC. I find it, it's, I find it difficult to talk about, you know, nice to have, you know, we talk about separate orchestra rooms and expanding the gym and, you know, community access to the, things like that. It's hard, it's hard to, you know, put that on a yes, we'll do it list if we don't know what's going to happen in a couple of years. So, but, you know, but I do like, I find this valuable in terms of, in the same way that I found the ADA audit valuable. There was another study, right, that said, here are some things that you could do and this is what it's going to cost. And now we take that as a resource as we consider, you know, the capital needs going forward. So, you know, I wouldn't, some of the other educational need opinions were interesting, but I think would require further discussion in terms of slotting the relative urgency in our next year's and further years' capital plans.
Maybe this is what you were saying, Mr. Demling, but I see it as, you know, just like we can't forget about Crocker Farm as we work on, address the needs of the other two buildings, we also can't focus just on Crocker Farm and sort of, that doesn't happen in a vacuum. And I sort of look at it as we need to balance and be considering the needs of all of our facilities as we work through these and knowing that there's a finite amount of, you know, capital spending available and sort of being wise in how we're doing that so that all of our students in our schools have access to quality child-centered buildings and not just the folks going into the new buildings. I think with that in mind, it might be helpful, I'm wondering, Mr. Roy Clark, if you could sort of point to sort of this, I'm going to assume, but I don't want to assume that the things that are in the plan and sort of either being worked already in progress or in the plan for the coming year are those critically urgent ones that we do need to be addressing. So if you could highlight those for us on these, on the different pages, sort of like guide, you know, viewers at home in terms that might be less close to it, as to which ones of those you would say are addressing that need.
I think you're muted, Rupert.
Okay, I'm going to just switch. I won't be able to see you because I'm going to be looking at the slideshow.
Rupert, would you like for me to present the slide so you don't have to do both?
Well, I think I can go through it fairly quickly without having to do the whole thing.
Yep.
As Mr. Demling mentioned, this doesn't include some of the educational program improvements that in addition, that would require an addition. This was really looking at the existing infrastructure. And so the roof is one of the major components. It is in the capital plan. We also have accelerated some of our requests for some immediate repairs on the shingled portions of the roof. The HVAC systems, most of what was in the feasibility study is already in the capital plan. They did recommend in their mechanical, electrical and plumbing section replacing both of the hot water tanks for the kitchen. We've already replaced one. The other one I don't have a plan for at the moment, but we might be able to squeeze it into another project. But the chiller and unit ventilators and exhaust system, those already are in the plan as important components, excuse me. Window replacement is also something that was in the study and that's in our capital plan. One of the areas that's not directly in our capital plan that came up in the study is improved access control. This is on page 12 of the slide packet under item two, security. Creating a Sally port at the entrance where people not only would need to be buzzed into the building, but then they would be stopped at the office for a second visual check. And making the windows more intrusion resistant and changes the pedestrian safety in terms of circulation. Those are not currently in the capital plan as such. You know, the accessibility stuff we have in the capital plans. And most of the other things that were suggested in the report, which I itemized on the next to last page, item four, other recommendations. You can see in those, most of those are being taken care of either through our operating budget or through previous capital plan items. So that's the quick overview. I don't know if that satisfies or do you have more questions about that?
No, that's exactly, it's perfect. Thank you. Any other questions? I'm seeing, I'm not seeing any, but I also realized that some folks I'm not seeing on my screen right now. Or I don't know if it's my internet or other folks. No questions? If you're raising your hand and I can't see you, please feel free to speak up. Okay. Great. It's the hazard of evening meetings, yes. Well, thank you, Mr. Roy Clark. This was helpful, a helpful overview and update.
My pleasure. Thank you all for your time and your attention.
Thank you, Rupert.
And we're now moving into our next item, which is preschool planning for the 2021-22 school year. And I'll just remind folks, welcome, Ms. Burns. We are, this again was another one that we, we as a committee had requested an update on. We'd received a report a couple of months ago on preschool when we were looking at the return to in-person planning. So this is an update and as folks that may have been present at the beginning of the meeting, we had a comment from the community regarding preschool planning. This is related to that, but we do have a goal. The superintendent has a goal for this year to complete that study that the community member had mentioned during their public comment. We will be coming We will be coming back to that. Um, I think Dr. Morris had mentioned that. That report should be done sort of within the next month or four weeks. And so at um, our upcoming meetings and certainly by the time we get to. The superintendent evaluation, we will have that. That report and discussion then. Um, so this is an update, um. And no decision or action is being is intended for tonight, just updates and questions.
And with that in mind, thank you for the introduction and I'll introduce Ms. Burns. Um, she put together some slides. I'll. You know, I told her to make the positive assumption that they've the slides have been read. And so she's really going to do a very brief summary of the slides. I thought Mr. Roy Clark's actually summary was a good model there. That he did, uh, so thank you for queuing him, Ms. McDonald. I thought that worked really well. And so, uh, again, she'll she'll be very brief in in going through these and then really open it up for any questions or comments. But as Miss Donald said, there's no. Uh, school committee action required and I'm gonna. Uh, bring up her slides, so she. Doesn't have to. All right, can you do those, uh, Ms. Burns?
Yeah, great. Thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm happy to be back. Um, so I just have a few updates. If you could go to the next page, the first one of the slides. So, um, I believe I was here in March last and so, um, since then, at that meeting, we had talked about, um, a reopening plan. And since then, we've had an increase of nine students who are coming to school in person. So just as a reminder, all of our students this school year, um, are preschool students who have IEPs, so, um, students who have an identified disability. Um, we have all of our staff, um, back. Um, they're now working in person. It's no longer a voluntary status. Um, and as I said, we don't have our typically developing peers, but that will be, um, the next step for next year. Um, we do have, when I did this presentation, it was last week and the things are changing quickly at the moment, so. Um, those four initial evaluation consents I was talking about have all been signed, so. Um, we have about twenty twenty one open, um, initial evaluations. And we are now doing a lot of, I would say ninety nine percent really of our assessments in person, um, as opposed to virtual. Um, and I did skip, but we do have stu- fifteen students who are still, um, receiving services and some sort of virtual format. Okay, if we go to the next one. So looking forward to next school year. Um, we're excited to have all of our children attend school in person. Um, and again, to have our typical peers return to the classroom. Um, and continued engagement with Kristen Hayes. Um, we have a meeting, I think, set up for next week, our next meeting. Um, to talk about the future steps for the preschool program. All right, next one. Um, thank you. Um, we've received, actually, this number has increased since I've since I, um, put these together. Um, but we've received quite a few applications for typical peers, which is really exciting. Um, at the moment, actually, we have twenty one students have accepted a placement in the fall program. Um, and then I just sort of put some of the other information up here to explain the students who. Decided not to take a placement, who were offered one. Um. Um, we, we do have, um, we have been able to offer a placement to everyone who applied this year. Um, we didn't do a lottery just because the numbers were quite low, so we were able to, um, offer one to everyone. Um, but I think on the next slide, it says that we do still have, um, so openings for the twenty point. Five hour program as well as the fourteen hour program. So, um, I'd be really happy to get some more applications. So if anyone's interested and they're still looking for preschool for their child next year, um, or if you know anyone who is. Um, that's my email address there, obviously, burnse@arps. And, um, I'd be really happy to send the electronic, the the link to them so that they could apply. And those are my updates. I think that was it.
Yeah, it's a simple question. How many, um, how many seats do you anticipate having available?
For, um, typically developing peers? There's about thirty. So we have, if we have twenty two who have confirmed, we have about eight, um, seats left. Of course, some things could change a little bit if, um, parents change their minds. That's the, um, that's what we're anticipating, about thirty spots.
Questions from the committee? Ms. Spitzer.
Just a a small question. And you may not have the answer to this yet. Um, with the change in time, we've often talked about it. Um, with regards to the elementary kids and also with regards to the high school or middle school. Um, what does it mean for the preschoolers or is this still to to be determined? I know they have a different schedule than those, um. Older kids in the building.
Yeah, um, so that there was a little bit of a staggered start. We're going to keep our, um. Our start time of eight thirty, which is what it was, um, this year and I think in previous years.
Other questions? Thank you, Nick. I I take the the few, the. The volume of questions to be that you did a very thorough job on the update and not that we're not interested. So I really appreciate you coming again to. To give us this update. Um, and look forward to talking again when when, um, once that report and the work with Kristen, Kristen Hayes is completed.
Great, thank you. Have a great night.
Great. Okay, so we're moving, um, we're moving right along. Um. Next up is our, uh, discussion on sixth grade stu- consideration of sixth grade students attending middle school. Um, and just for folks that aren't necessarily tracking every single moment of our meetings and all our multiple meetings, uh, this is. Um, this conversation began two years ago now and actually even even longer ago, if you consider the facilities work. Um, but there was a working group. Um, or, uh, advisory group that that met, um, two years ago throughout the summer of twenty nineteen and into the fall of twenty nineteen. Um, and was going to be giving a report to the regional school committee. Um, uh, in early twenty twenty, um, and that got sort of, uh, paused and and, uh, backburnered. Um, as a result of, uh, the pandemic. The regional committee, um, of which all of us are are members of, um, took this up, uh, last week. And, um, expressed interest in exploring this, um, and hearing from. Um, the municipal, the elementary districts, um, as to, um, interest in in, um. In continuing this exploration and and talking about this. So. Um, that's where, that's our role tonight is to, um, discuss, uh, if this is something that, uh, this. Our committee would like to explore, um, and our engagement process for that so that we can take that back to the regional school committee. Meeting, um, for their consideration. Dr. Morris, I don't know if you want to add anything.
Yeah, I think there's, I I'm gonna sound a little, for people who watch these meetings, certainly you all, I think I'll sound a little broken recordy. Uh, for a second, but I think there's really three considerations. Uh, now that the regional school committee has, um, opened the door. For elementary committees to engage in this. I think there there there's three distinct areas to focus on for me. Um, that might help frame the rest of the discussion, which will likely be about engagement. The first is the educational model. Right? So for many, many years, we've had this question, we being the district about. For sixth graders, um, would it make sense to be in a. Middle school environment, you know, in the last few years, uh, for for last couple of years, actually. Uh, we've had in some of our elementary schools, some models that have. Mimicked some of the middle school aspects. In other words, teachers rotate through or they take subjects and share students. So it's kind of like a mini. Middle school model that way. But I think, you know, some of the other ways that, you know, are discussed is. The connection to the school, that students are in elementary school for seven years is wonderful, but then they're in middle school for two years. Uh, so that could be a challenge for our sixth graders. Um. You know, it'd be interesting to hear more directly from sixth graders as part of this engagement process on that. The other piece is compared to other districts, our sixth grade students have less access to things like world language. Uh, and some other electives that are available in many middle schools and not in ours. So. Uh, I think I mentioned last time in in a meeting, I think it was last, perhaps last week, that. Uh, a number of members of the group that looked at this took a trip to North Hampton and we looked at their middle school model. And sixth grade there has a substantially different model than the seventh and eighth grade because they want to maintain that, you know, developmental appropriateness. But their quote unquote specials rotation looks very, very different. Uh, than what we do at the elementary level. And so, you know, I think compared to. Comparison districts or peer districts, you know, it raises some questions about what's possible in an elementary setting versus, uh, a more middle school setting that way. So there's there's questions about the educational model. How do we best engage and. Uh, maintain that engagement for sixth grade students, given the developmentally where they're at and and, you know. Some thoughts personally that I would express is that, you know, I've heard directly from. Former colleagues in sixth grade, because I used to teach sixth grade, that, you know. Developmentally, it looks a little different now than it did when I was teaching fifteen, twenty years ago, that sixth graders, the sixth grade experience. Based on the world we live in in twenty twenty one. Doesn't really match the experience in the early two thousands, uh, for a whole host of societal factors. So I think there's a whole developmental. Educational model question to engage. I think the second two are much more practical logistical, which is not less important, but just to. Highlight the difference. We are going to be strained by space as a result of the changes we made, uh, during the pandemic to, uh. In Wildwood and Fort River. I was at Wildwood today. I walked around with Principal Nick. And, uh, we are going to be using all the cafeteria spaces, the art room, the music room to fit twenty one classrooms in. Because we've lost twelve classroom spaces. They're small. They weren't great classroom spaces. Uh, the ventilation was bad, which is why we opened them up and why we're not going to put faux walls in the way they were. But the reality is, from a space perspective, it means that art, music. Are going to be on a cart for the foreseeable future at Wildwood School. And so that that's a problem, you know, I think personally it's a problem. You know, we don't have spaces. We've talked about it in different terms before, but there's not just nice spaces for instrumental music. Right now, we're outside and thank goodness. For the most part, that works out. Uh, we'll be in school next next year by all indications, all year long. So so, you know, what happens to our instrumental music program? What happens to our intervention, ELL special ed staff? We can work on some integrated models because the rooms are so big. Uh, but we're gonna have be very, very space challenged. And that same is true at Fort River. It's a little less acute at Fort River right now because there are fewer classrooms. But as Comanates goes upgrade levels, we're going to end up in a very similar situation. And even at Fort River, we're likely going to need to use the art room. And the music room, uh, as classroom. So we have some real significant space needs now and it's not just, oh, it's. They want to have their own classroom. It's they're they actually have to change their program and I want to compliment our specialists. They have been. Incredible this year at turning on a dime and figuring out how to make that work. Uh, but I don't think that's sustainable long term, right? And long term, or even medium term, right? We know that's the plan for next year. We're not moving anybody. Uh, but I think, you know, this came up, Ms. Spitzer raised, I think, two weeks ago at the last Amherst meeting. And I think it was a really important point about, um. What does it mean for space? Does it mean that we're in this boat for four years or five years until a building project and art and music teachers never have their own classroom and. And again, intervention services have to happen differently. Because we've lost twelve spaces that is, you know, a lot of small group instruction happened in from intervention, special ed and ELL. We have a real quandary, uh, because in terms of full classroom spaces. In the traditional sense, both Fort River and Wildwood are down to fifteen. With the changes we've made. Both schools will have more than fifteen sections next year and that's. I'm not talking about spacing. I'm just saying the world is a wonderful place. COVID recedes. We will just have too many students, uh, for fifteen classrooms, means we're usurping cafeteria spaces, art rooms, music rooms. To be those spaces where we're usurping what used to be small group spaces, uh, to be full classroom spaces. So we we have some real needs there. And again, you know, even if it was possible, I wouldn't recommend re-quadding, so to speak. Those rooms, uh, the ventilation, we've seen the difference it makes to not have the faux walls there, to have. Cross ventilation possible. And I think COVID, my personal opinion, COVID is going to be with us in some way, shape or form. For for quite some time. Um, and, um, so, you know, it is a real concern about that and and so that. Sort of expedites, you know, from an administrative point of view, our consideration of the sixth grade question. Because it it creates a lot of, you know, it's gonna have some fiscal impact as well. You know, if we don't have cafeterias, cafeterias are really wonderful. Uh, efficient ways to, uh, supervise children while they're eating. It's really inefficient for staff members to be in twenty one rooms. While students eat lunch, uh, or outside, you know, on days like today where it's it's more possible. So. You know, we are already thinking we may have to use some of those grant funds to have additional staffing just to cover things like lunch, which. From a public fund perspective, I don't think that's necessarily where you. Where any of us would want to spend our funds is is lunch coverage, uh, and and, you know, doubling and tripling the cost of that. So we really have this acute issue. Um, the last one is 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 less acute, but no less a a logistical issue, which is we have a building project. And MSBA only approved two enrollments. Right? One of those is three hundred twenty students at Fort River. One of those is five hundred seventy five students, um, that, uh, would necessitate. Sixth grade to move to the middle school to make the numbers work. And so that's, we only have two paths. And so just another consideration is at some point in the next couple of years, next, actually. Year. Yeah, I think we want to be, you know, sometime in a year from now, we want to be in a place as an organization where that decision's made. You know, that decision. Primarily rests with you all about grade configuration because you have to approve an educational plan, uh, that's going to direct that. And so, you know, we are going to be forced to consider this and make a decision. One way or the other, it within the next calendar, within the next year, a year from now, I think that situation is going to need to be resolved one way or the other. Uh, if we want to hit our timelines for MSBA, which I think everyone in the room in Amherst wants us to hit our timelines for MSBA. I don't think there's much debate or discussion. Uh, or divergent opinions on that. So, you know, we have all these factors, both the educational pieces, the. Acute issues at Fort River and Wildwood and then the longer term MSBA decision. Uh, and Mr. Harrington and I are on that committee, as you know, and and we know that that's a looming one right now. We're, you know, just finishing up OPM, we'll be then hiring designer. And my experience is once you hire a designer, things, you know, it feels like a slog that first bit. And then things accelerate. So, you know, I think we do want to engage the public on this. We do want to share accurate information. Uh, it's been an awkward year to try to grab attention off COVID. Uh, and in person or remote. So I think this year wasn't the year to perhaps be doing that on the side. So I don't regret, you know, any actions we've taken, given the pandemic. But I think now that students are back in school, we have a pretty much more clear pathway of what next year will look like. I do think whether it's in the summer or fall, uh, I think we do need to, you know, heavily engage the the larger public as well as staff members. Uh, explicitly on this. And I think there's two goals for me. One is to educate people about these, these real choices that are made. You know, the Fort River Wildwood piece, you know, something that we need to do at some point is to make a visual of what this looks like. Because you're all understanding it because you all are deeply invested in our schools. I think people who are watching this maybe get it, but the general public may not realize the implications. Uh, of what this school, by square footage, it won't be overcrowded, except that it will be, right? It's this weird. Uh, nuance that that's hard to explain. So we need to communicate that. I think the MSBA. Does need to be communicated an awful lot as well as the educational model. So. That that's really what I wanted to to share is like, I thought it'd be helpful to kind of put some buckets out there of. Uh, of what, you know, at least from my perspective, we'd want to, um, communicate to the public and get feedback on and. Wherever we land, I want it to be based on people having accurate information and making the best choice, you all in the end, but the community also understanding the situation and making the best choice. For this district moving forward because this is, all of these are really high stakes decisions, right? The educational model, the space issues we have and MSBA, right? I mean, I think if you're writing my goals for next year. Probably a lot of these things are things that are going to be in the goals, uh, and rightfully so, because they're really critical for the long term future. And vitality of our district. So, you know, I I I don't want to be long winded. I know I was a little bit as compared to the first couple of presentations, but I think this one is something as opposed to those others. That isn't just informational. I think it's really, uh, we should be plotting a path of of how to engage moving forward. And and I'll say one other thing which. You know, maybe a recommendation is, uh, and I think it's worked well in other projects, if the committee would like to move forward, I wonder if there's a. You know, working group or there's a couple of members of the committee who would be willing to work with me and and perhaps some of our leaders in our district to to map out what this might look like. I can think of a couple of other times where we've had, um, a working group that's included school committee to map out an engagement process that's been really successful. Um, actually, we got here coming from Ms. McDonald, the Micerdonia is working with me, um. Uh, around that. And I thought that was a really effective model, uh, of being able to have people who want to dig into. How to do this. So I'm happy to have the large group conversation, but I do want to have that, at some point, it probably makes sense that people, uh, from the committee. Take the lead on this with me, um, because it is such a community wide conversation. And now I really stop.
Thanks. That that was, uh, that was helpful, um, to sort of. Describing all of the issues and considerations that we need to sort of wrestle with as we as we think about this. Um. Again, for folks that are are track, are watching, um, and maybe not tracking as closely about. Sort of going back to your, the third issue that you described about the MSBA project, the five seventy five consolidated school. Um. I I sort of want to ask the other question, the other, the other option, enrollment option in there was the the three twenty. Ish, um, for Fort River. And that is K through six, correct? So. It just, I just want to ask the question out loud. So, it like. The decision on where sixth grade goes, would that take that off the table in the MSBA or does that continue as a K through five, three twenty school?
Yeah, I do think that the school committee's decision on. Yeah, I do think that the school committee's decision on the sixth grade will will define the direction of the MSBA project. I mean, it has to as part of the educational plan, which the school committee is responsible, not for creating, that's my job. But is responsible for voting on. That's a required part of the MSBA process. And at some point, the educational plan does have a part on grade configuration. And with the choices that the MSBA, as I think I've shared here, we asked for a couple more and explored a couple more options. But they they made it a binary choice. So the MSBA project will, the choice that is made about grade configuration will define which direction the MSBA process project goes in. Not to put more heavyweight on the conversation or pressure on the committee, but I appreciate the question because it's good to be clear upfront on that.
Mr. Demling, and then Ms. Spitzer.
Yeah, a brief question, then a comment. So Dr. Morris, to clarify, in terms of the impact on the spacing of Fort River and Wildwood next year going forward. What what's the likelihood that the cafeterias are lost? In other words, what what's the likelihood that if Fort River and Wildwood, for the next four years, all the kids are eating in their classrooms?
So at Wildwood, I would say it's close to a hundred percent that all three castles be used. At Fort River, I feel pretty confident that at least one or two of them are used, probably not all three. But at Wildwood, I think the low end is two, and the more likely outcome is three. Just because there are more students right now at Wildwood than there are at Fort River.
So yeah, so my my comment will will be brief because you you covered it all in your in your intro. But should we explore this at the Amherst School Committee? Is it extremely easy yes for for me? You know, given the reason. So I I think the challenge here in terms of how we manage the process and the communication and the engagement with the public is that we have two, like you cited, two very compelling needs of why we have to look at this. We have to look at this because of the impact to the spacing to Fort River and Wildwood. And we have to look at this because of the direct and major impact to the the school building project. And 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 yet, there is the, so there's the have to, but then there's the want to. Is it like, those things aside, would it be educationally advisable for the sixth graders to be at the middle school? And and is that something that that we want to do? And I feel like, you know, that we, to to be honest and and just transparent and practical, it's 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 appropriate to acknowledge those those have to urgencies while still authentically engaging in 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 the want tos. Because I feel like, and so I, because the way my kids were spaced, I was a middle school, middle school parent for six years in a row. So I got a pretty good feeling sense for different ways of running the middle school and and the teachers there. And the middle school is awesome. And I don't mind saying this, even though this isn't a regional meeting. But um, but the 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 teachers there just have such a deep commitment to that age group and and have really evolved the 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 way that they do that. And and there's some really interesting benefits and and things that you can start to do when you have a solid, you know, three grade, you know, true middle school where where the transition isn't so helter skelter of transitioning from sixth to seventh, a new building, and then another building, you know, there. And a lot of interesting vision that can be, you know, it could be a real value add, a real, a real, something that really want attracts people to want to stay in our district and to want to come back to our district at a, at a pivot point, right? Where we're, where, you know, charter schools sometimes add and subtract our on our enrollment. Anyway. So, yeah, I I I think it's pretty clear. I I think in terms of pace, you know, I, the the the, when when I looked at regionalization with with Palma a couple of years ago, we we had this this catchphrase of as deliberate, as deliberative as necessary, but as expeditious as possible. I think that really applies here is that we really have some time urgency to do this on the faster side of the street. But, you know, trying to make sure that we don't short shift, give the, I'm sorry, give the engagement short shift. So, yeah, I mean, to the extent that we are, we can, we can handle it, you know. And thankfully, you know, the the mountain of in person and remote, that that whole debate and discussion is is now more or less completed. Now that we're past that, I I it's, I think it makes sense for this to rise to the level of a priority for at least for our community extension.
So I didn't hear Chair McDonald, does it? I don't want to speak out of turn. So I wanted to, thank you for bringing this forward. And it's really frustrating because there there are three really important pieces that you laid out. And I think unfortunately, I'm really being pushed by number two to say that we need to do this as soon as possible. I'd like to say that, you know, all of these have equal weight. But, you know, you were just talking about equity issues and with regard to Mr. Demling's question about bringing kids back. But I think, I think there are equity issues here too within our district about the kids. You know, some of the kids in Wildwood are going to have the, and Fort River are going to have the advantage of being in these built, these classrooms that I think have been substantively improved by by the changes we made that were necessary in order to bring kids in into the buildings this year. So I think we did the right thing. But I think the problem is when I think of the potential for my kid to, or anybody's kid to go through the school year in a room that, like a cafeteria, you know, probably doesn't have an easy bathroom to access, may not have as many windows as some of the other classrooms. So I think to the extent that we can minimize the number of kids who are in spaces that weren't necessarily designed for classroom learning, I think that's really important. You brought up the budget issue of like wanting to, you know, have the staffing issues with using cafeterias. But I think there's also issues with using spaces that weren't designed for learning in a non emergency year. You know, I mean, this year, there are a lot of reasons we had to do that going forward. I think we want to avoid that as much as possible. So obviously, if there were things that come out about the educational model being, you know, really not a good fit and we were, you know, had serious concerns, but this is a model that's being used in a lot of other districts, I think successfully, as you pointed out. So I guess my question is, you know, you talked about engaging over the summer or engaging over the fall. I mean, have you pretty much decided that we need to stick with the model we have for next year? Or is there a way to engage the public and potentially address this for the following year? And I'm just thinking, you know, one of the, I don't want to call it a silver line. I'll say one of the silver linings of Covid is it has forced us to kind of sometimes reevaluate things and make changes that would have taken longer than would have been the past. I'm thinking about the change in start time, for example. You know, I think, I don't know if we would have made a decision on that in the timeline we did, weren't not for that. So I guess my core question is, do we, is there any possibility to consider this change for the for the fall?
Yes, we have talked about that internally. Because I think all the things you highlight are are correct. I mean, one of the classrooms, you know, Fort River, I was there last week, the week before, is, you know, a cafeteria is being used. They're using the one on the outside, if you know the buildings on the outside. So actually, windows are really good, but once you start going to the other two cafeterias, they get less good very quickly. And it's still a cafeteria, right? I think the facilities department has done fabulous job. Technology is there. You know, there's like the kind of mobile, like large screen TV for, you know, any displays. I mean, I think people are doing the best with what they have and, you know, but it's it's a cafeteria, right? I can't pretend it's not. And the kids all know that it's a cafeteria, right? This is a fifth grade class. It's plainly obvious. When you think about next year, you know, the two barriers that come up a lot, and they're going to be super frustrating because they're, at least the first one is very bureaucratic, is it's a different district. And so the number of logistical bureaucratic matters about who owns which staff members. And and by owns, I mean, like, you know, which district employs them. I don't, you know, that's probably a poor use of terms. But, you know, do they belong to the region? Do they belong to the Amherst Elementary School? Are they paid from somewhere? Are they changing districts? Like, the the number of HR related and fiscal related impacts are huge. And if they're at the middle school, what percentage of the nurse gets paid and which the administrator, right? All of these pieces, which I know from the outside seem really hollow, they're they're not. And we'd need some level of legal agreement between the region and, in this case, the Amherst Public Schools that would allow for that. Which is not easy. So I think if we were in a traditional K to twelve district, some of those logistical factors wouldn't be as prominent. They'd still be there, but they wouldn't be as prominent. Licenseur questions, all those things. So when it's May eleventh, you know, you know, I think, at least from my perspective, and I think the team shares this, no one's looking forward to the space issues next year. And I I think it's hard to imagine being able to pull that off effectively, given the number of of complications. I think the second factor, which is less logistical and more about kids, which is good, is just for our fifth grade students, they've spent much of their fourth and fifth grade years not in the building. And to find out in late May or early June, that by the way, you're not coming back to the school, you're not having that sixth grade experience, felt hard to us. It's not that we couldn't do it. It it, there was a piece of it that didn't feel like we were scoping that in a way that felt good to us, you know. And sorry, that's not very technical terms, but that that's really how it felt. You know, whereas if it was the current fourth graders, they, if we're doing good job engagement, everybody knows we get back next year. This is a discussion point. This may be their last year at elementary school for the families and the students. And it 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 felt, it felt better to us. It felt more respectful than, geez, your fourth year ended on March thirteenth and your fifth grade year started on April twelfth, or excuse me, on, yeah, April twelfth, that's right, of the following year. And then you're heading to middle school, which for some students may be really exciting for other students. You know, so there's that that human piece of having students really finish their elementary school experience, you know, albeit it may be in a cafeteria, right, as a classroom and not be a traditional one. But I think we were, I'll say for myself, I got really stuck, and I think I speak for members of my team, just thinking about those, that particular set of kids. And what do we owe them for the interrupted education in terms of in person they've had? And so those are the two factors that made us feel like it probably wasn't in everyone's best interest feasibly. Or, you know, for the other pieces to really push for next year, even though from a logistics, like on the ground logistics, I think everybody recognizes the challenges that you cite, that I cited, that are going to be suboptimal next year in the buildings. But, you know, I'm open to feedback on that, but, you know, I want you to know we did actively consider it. And that's sort of the recommendation we have that we really, we'll we'll sort of have to live through next year unless unless you all feel differently. And and I'm open to it if you do, and then be able to do this with more forewarning and more time to plan for teachers and and all the other pieces that go along with it. It also, our enrollment is anticipated to drop significantly at the middle school the year after the next one coming up. So from a enrollment perspective, number of kids in the building, the fit in the middle school could certainly work next year. It it would likely work a lot better the year after. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be as tight as Fort River and Wildwood will be next year. I'm not trying to say that it would, but we'll have, you know, fewer students the year after. And probably a little more capacity at the school to absorb students who may come from any of the communities. Sorry, long winded answer, but I think a really important question we've struggled with a lot, Gary.
Did you have a follow up, Ms. Spitzer?
It's, it's just a comment. So I, all, I I totally defer to the admin team on on thinking about those issues of timing for the kids. I think then I would just strongly advocate, and I don't know to what extent we can, that we do whatever we we can to improve either the outdoor space or improve the indoor space in a way that we can try to meet the needs of the kids at Fort River and Wildwood, in particular, around things like. You mentioned the instrumental learning, you know, it would really frustrate me if the kids who lost out on almost a whole year of in person instrumental learning then also miss out on it because of building issues for the next year. You know, this can be another conversation, but I I I do think if we can in any way prioritize some of the funding going to those two schools. What I'm hearing is this, this isn't going to be an issue at the same way at Crocker Farm for loss of specials space and things. And I know Crocker Farm has space issues, but it it just may be worth looking into how we can improve next year for those kids.
Yeah, and just a brief response is, you know, when we do finally get more clarifying, we got a hundred fifty one page document from the federal government today on the stimulus or yesterday on the stimulus funds, which then will get filtered through DSE and we'll get guidance from DSE at some point. But one of the things that's really clear is it has to be an engagement process. It's not like a quick decision is going to be made. But I think, so I I'm cautious of committing things before there's an engagement process around stimulus. But but in my head, and I think our heads, we fully anticipate having to spend some money, even if it's one year of money to make the learning environments at Fort River and Wildwood improved. And some of that may be like, you know, temporary partitions that aren't full partitions about some of the small group instruction as I referenced, because this is large spaces and we've sort of retrofit some things. But we we may need to really spend some resources to make those settings more functional, not just on the special side, but on the academic side, particularly for small group instruction. And, you know, I'm going to be, I'm going to have a hard time being convinced that's not in what we need to do, despite we have an engagement process. But I think, again, that highlights how much can we engage on the current space situation? Because until, unless we communicated, you know, we can't expect people to know it, especially as they're not allowed in the buildings, people aren't really being able to see it.
Yeah, I I think, you know, I think, you know, the way you started us, started this discussion off, Dr. Morris, about sort of thinking about the three, three things. And and to a certain extent, yes, the decision has to be made, you know, by by this time next year for, from the MSBA perspective. But the, but the corollary is, is, is when does the shift happen, right? Because on the MSBA process, that shift doesn't necessarily need to happen before there's a new building, right? So what we're separating it and thinking about it also from this perspective of what are our space needs right now? And urgent space needs at Fort River and Wildwood sort of, sort of pivots that. And then, you know, there's, do we want to do it from an educational and developmental perspective? Do we want to do it from a, from a building perspective with regard to the MSBA process? And do we want to do it right now because of the the critical space challenges that we have at two of our our three elementary schools? So I think, you know, like, it's it's sort of like a funnel. In my mind, I I I think I'm hearing it from Ms. Spitzer as well as Mr. Demling. Like, it it seems to be like a no brainer that we do want to explore this and then work on this. I do want to turn though to Mr. Harrington and Ms. Laura, because we've, and want to make sure that you have an opportunity to weigh in on this as well. Mr. Harrington.
It's awesome. I've I've actually been waiting to say a few things and my two colleagues, they're kind of actually jumped on the same ship. So at at the risk of sounding impatient, like, my question is, when do we get started? Like, are we starting like after this meeting tomorrow morning? Like, when do we get this process rolling? And then also, my my more serious question, I guess, well, that that is seriously how I feel. But my more serious question is like, when, when do we get to dig into the study? Is there like, anything that that is going to be presented to the public? Or is it just going to be like a public discussion or?
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I would imagine that we would want to present something to public to get feedback and and do it in an iterative fashion. So I think the first piece is, what are the space needs right now? Is this just an educational conversation? I mean, I always go back to it because I'm an educator, but Maslow's hierarchy of need, right? So, so, you know, educational model, I think, is really important and really important conversation. We may be one step beyond, like, you know, above that in Maslow's hierarchy, right? Of like, the kids can't get instrumental messlings, or they can't get small group instruction the same way we want them to. And and that may trump some of the other factors, right? So, you know, I think, you know, again, working with, you know, you know, if there is a working group that can be formed, I really like collaborating with, you know, with you all. And I think just, I I feel the urgency and agree with it, Mr. Harrington. And I think that that work often can happen really well when we have a working group that just sit down and and get things done in in a pretty timely way. So, you know, I think the reason I made my recommendation is, I think, exactly for the point that you raised, that we want to do this and and get going and and get communicating, right? As what this is, I mean, I can imagine in my head, I haven't drafted anything. This is all like here. Just really showing the map of what Fort River and Wildwood will really look like next year, right? Because, you know, I've said a bunch of words tonight, and and you all are more attuned to them than than the average bears. Because it's, you know, you're on school committee, you obviously, you know, exhibit a lot of, you spend a lot of time and have a lot of interest. Some, a lot of you have volunteered a lot in the schools in different ways or worked in the schools in different capacities. So you all, you know, are more likely to to understand what I'm talking about than people who don't spend all, you know, significant amounts of time thinking or working in school. So I think the first is just to communicate what's the current situation, what's it going to look like next year, and what are the implications? And then I think, you know, weaving in the MSBA piece, because I never want to lose an opportunity if we have a captive audience to talk about MSBA type things. And in some ways, the educational model matters, but what matters most is is actually the space, right? And that's, you look at, you know, I've read plenty of articles that say most this, most districts make decisions on grade configuration based on space needs and not on other needs. And I'm not advocating for that, but the reason for that is that space is finite, right? We can't create it in the same way. And so, you know, I I do think there needs to be some level of presentation so that people understand why it is that we're engaging them. And we're giving them information to respond to. So in my head, anyway, that's what I'm thinking about. Um, so in my head, anyway, that's what I'm thinking about. And again, I'd be happy to work with anybody. Uh, but I think probably, you know, uh, two people, uh, to form a working group would be, you know, really effective. And and for me, it's a working group. I don't think it's a subcommittee, because I don't think it's making um, anything that would lead to deliberations. It's really about the engagement piece. Um, so, you know, I I that's, that would be my recommendation. And again, I I I second or third the urgency, uh, and and Ms. Spitzer, to your point, I'm open to feedback. And if the committee really says, hey, let's try to we feel like this is worth pushing for next year, I'm open to that. I I I only mentioned the barriers because we went through the thought process on it and you know, at least at the current time, I don't feel like it's over, you use the word like overrule or that's not how I view it at all. It's more just at the current time, we, you know, the logistics of the multiple districts and then thinking about that cohort of fifth graders or for, uh, fifth graders right now, those are just the two factors that made us err on the side of having a really tight school year. I also think frankly, um, not to be funny about it, but I think when people experience what it's like to have such little space, the openness of people to think differently will increase, right? And and I'm not trying to like push people into a bad experience, but uh, you know, I think there could be a boy who cried wolf scenario of like, oh, you know, someone's just saying this so that like I have this ulterior motive of moving sixth grade to the middle school, which is I just want what's best for kids, right? I don't have an ulterior motive. If I was a sixth grade teacher like I was twenty years ago, I'd probably be on the other side of this equation, right? Because I love working in elementary school. I think when people experience what it's like to be so confined and not have spaces for the things that we want for our kids, I think people will experience it differently, uh, and experience the question differently. And I, you know, so I think the time urgency I get, uh, you know, I think we just have to understand, or from my perspective, understand that some people will get there when they experience what the, what the, the new reality is and they recognize the challenges. And and for me, you know, my mind probably too often uh, goes to the next step and, uh, I'm learning in my life to slow down. And sometimes people need to hear about it, but also need to experience it as well. Sorry, you didn't need that psychology piece of myself, so sorry for that.
So Ms. Laura, did you, did you want to comment or ask a question?
Um, I I'm, I was, I keep thinking thirty years ago or a little more, I was in middle school. And when we moved like in Holliston, fifth grade, I, as a fifth grader, I was in middle school. And then in Hartford, sixth grade, I was in middle school. And developmentally and emotionally, I don't remember feeling like I wasn't ready. So I went, first I went there, the emotional development, what would it mean for our students, sixth grade to be with seventh, eighth graders? The only thing I might be a little concerned about would be bus time. Because that's when it's really unsupervised and some people can be wild. But I too, like Ben and probably the rest of you, would just love to read some studies. Because I'm I'm reacting emotionally, but I'm not looking at the data, and I really appreciate the data about opening later, starting our schools later, because I was against that until I read all these studies about how much better it is for our high schoolers and how they're actually getting more sleep. So I'm on board with like, even for next year, let's if if it's not too labor intensive, because why, we're coming back in a different way, so it might be the year to do it, because the fifth graders have mostly missed and but I, so these are just my thoughts that are floating around. And thank you for inviting me into the conversation.
Mr. Demling?
Yeah.
But you go ahead.
Yeah. So just a couple of comments. I I really appreciate the different points of view here. Um, the, um, you know, I, there is definitely a non-zero part of me that wants to try and push it for this fall. Um, I think at the end of the day, though, I would still defer to um, to, uh, to those in central admin and in building admin who have, uh, a closer point of view on this and and also our our six grade teachers um, who who who, um, who have the closest relationship with it with these students and our fifth, our fifth grade, um, students as well. Um, but, you know, like, I mean, we were, you know, the idea of equity between the buildings came up earlier in terms of, um, and I mean, I think of equity for kids at Fort River and Wildwood. I mean, it's, it's been decades that these kids haven't had walls. And they have definitely been in the buildings that have been a steps below Crocker and and now they're not going to have a calf and and they're not going to have an auditor music room for for some number of years if we don't if this, if this move doesn't happen, right? Because I mean, worst, worst case scenario is that not only does sixth grade not move to the middle school, but the building project fails. And then and then where are we, right? So that there's a whole host of 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 outcomes here that are are undesirable, that that, um, that make me want to move on this as quickly as possible. I think, I think the other thing is, um, uh, in terms of timing. So if 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 fall twenty one is too fast, then then, you know, fall twenty two becomes the next default target. I think we would want to make, to try and make the decision at the school committee level as soon as we could reasonably could given the engagement needs in in the, in the calendar, in the school calendar year, because I think that the more time that we give families and teachers and parents and administrators to make that transition, the 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 better a a transition it's going to be, right? And and so it's, uh, like, I I don't think we should wait and, you know, as long as we can. Um, uh, just because that's, that's what the MSBA requirement is, for example, you know, we should, we should keep pushing it ahead, even if we do have, you know, another eighteen months to, uh, to to work it out.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I appreciate that point, Mr. Demling. And I think, you know, I think it's good for the community, but I don't want to undersell. And you said this, but I think it's worth highlighting, and this is one of our challenges of thinking about doing it for next year. How much of a polar shift it would be, even if we tried to maintain a lot of the structures for teachers who are teaching sixth grade to transition to a middle school that has a bell schedule, even if they have an adjusted bell schedule, um, to being in a different building, to being with different colleagues, and we would want to invest significant amounts of time and energy to do that well, so that our staff members would feel supported with a change. That's going to be really hard if it happens, right? I I I've been there. I've been a sixth grade teacher. This discussion happened when I was teaching sixth grade. Uh, and, uh, however I felt about it, the one thing that was really clear was it wouldn't be just a casual, oh, I just hop up to a different building and do what I've always done, right? If you want to do this well, and I think this came out in the study, uh, for the middle school grade span advisory group, is to do that well is is really to integrate it into a middle school model. Uh, and and that's a tough thing to do on a tight timeline. And I think that's my other concern that I should have mentioned is, and you've heard this on multiple topics, is we want to do things well. Um, this is a pretty significant shift to do in the timeframe we have for fall. So, you know, for me, I'm open to it. Again, other options, other ideas, but I just think I'd rather try to problem solve our problems for a year than create problems, because once you move them, if you don't do that well on the front end, I think there's long term negative potential impact uh, of how that middle school functions, if you're not, not able to be as thoughtful about the transition as you'd like to be.
I think, um, yeah, I I I would say I'm, I'm, you know, I share the the sense of urgency um, that I'm hearing from my colleagues, but I maybe I'm I'm sort of an outlier in this and that it it actually, um, scare frightens is not the right word, but I don't know. I get really concerned and worried about our ability to do that and 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 do that well, as you've just described, Dr. Morris, um, in this type timeframe. Um, and and, you know, thinking not just about the emotional impact and and, you know, for for the current fifth grade students, but just for all the other reasons that you described about sort of why people make urgent decisions about, you know, re- grade reconfiguration, about space. The last thing we would want to do, I think, my my personal opinion is 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 to make a really, um, swift pivot like this. Um, not get it right and and have it feel like it was, it was really, uh, you know, only a space decision and because, and and I think that's why I I sort of originally like broke down the decision. There's like three components to it. Um, and I don't want to lose sight about the developmental and educational model. Uh, you know, the space consideration is related to the educational model, because we want our students to have that rich art and music experience that they won't be able to get in those in those, because of our space configuration. And there are other reasons beyond simply space for why we would want to consider it. So, you know, like thinking about sort of, as you described other, when other districts make this change, recognizing that the primary reason, the reason why we're doing it and the timing that we're, that we're wanting to do it and the swiftness with which we want to make this move is driven by our space issues. And, you know, the ideal scenario would be that we would want to do this anyway, um, and what we're doing is speeding it up. Um, that may not be the case, but I, you know, I I think I don't want to us to lose sight of that. Um, addressing whether it's the right thing to do for our students, regardless of a space issue right now within our schools. Um, so that that was my only point in sort of breaking down those those components is um, what we're talking about is more of a timing of that, um, and, you know, thinking about what, you know, what is that ideal, um, education model for for our sixth grade students? Um, and hearing, um, sort of pretty unanimous, I, Carrie, I see you, uh, Ms. Spitzer, I see your hand, but I just wanted to sort of circle back. I'm hearing sort of unanimous agreement and alignment that we want to explore this, we want to explore this as quickly as possible. Um, and so that seems like, you know, really, um, extreme alignment on that. Um, so I guess the next question, um, for us to consider is, um, who would be interested in, um, partnering with Dr. Morris on sort of working out that outreach and engagement, um, plan for the committee? So Ms. Spitzer, um, I don't know if you had an additional comment or question? I think you're muted.
I was going to offer to to help out with the enrollment working group if I mean, if there are more of us than there are slots, I'm happy to um, talk about that. But the can I just ask one other question about the space? How's that affecting the before and after school ability to offer before and after school at care for Wildwood and Fort River? I just know that those programs are held in cafeteria spaces, which I imagine it makes them more complicated if if they're also being used for classroom, as classrooms.
Uh, yes, is the answer. Um, it, you know, we have Wildwood is the only one of our schools that has our, an after school program running right now, which is great. And we appreciate the Mark's Meadow Aftercare Program. They're doing a fabulous job. You know, I think we may have to look in spaces more like gyms, uh, and other spaces that, uh, right now have tons of stuff in them and not good ventilation. And those two problems will have to get fixed uh, for fall. Um, but I think we are going to have to look at more open general spaces instead of the cafeterias, which come with some problems, you know, uh, as it relates to food and otherwise. So we are going to have to be really creative as we approach that. It is definitely a barrier, um, that we're going to have, and particularly Wildwood has the largest current, uh, I mean, part of the pandemic had the largest aftercare program. Um, I think it's going to be an acute problem next year. I think you're right to highlight that.
Any other? I I'd be, if if unless somebody else is interested, I'd be happy to to partner with Ms. Spitzer and and Dr. Morris on that. Also, because I recall working with the the prior ones, and I don't think that's any help. But if somebody else is dying to do that, and I'll step aside. Dr. Morris, sorry.
So I'll probably, uh, get the virtual tomato from one of you, but I I do think if if Mr. Harrington has capacity, just because he's the rep on the build MSBA project. Uh, I mean, you're a genuine good guy and all those other things. But I think, you know, because that is a part of this, um, if you feel like you don't have capacity, I will, I apologize, uh, because I know you do lots and lots of things, but I do think that's a pretty critical piece, because this is all going to weave together. So you know, I do think, not that I'm not on both, but I think having an elected official who's on both the MSBA group and then organizing this, because they'll have that insight, um, would make sense. But I owe you like lunch or something if you end up doing this. Um, sorry to call you out there, Ben.
Yes, um, how labor intensive are we talking? Or no, not even labor intensive. Forget that part. That's the easy part. How time intensive are we talking?
Uh, you know, for me, I think it's really trying to map out a process to bring back to this committee next month. Um, and, you know, and maybe like a a core presentation that we could then get feedback on. So I don't think it's I think the front end is really about organizational design and planning and not about literally going to every session, because I think if if history is any example, I think the committee will be well represented at those. It's really much more about um, what do we want to present? What information we want to present? How would we approach that? We have a nice the middle grades, middle school grade span advisory had a communication, a draft plan. So I think it's trying to take a look at that and see what makes sense in this different context. Um, so, uh, famous last words, but I don't think it's literally like running lots of focus groups. Well, I don't believe it would be that. It's really about how do we want to engage? What do we want to engage the public with? Bring it back to this group a month from now, uh, so that we can get feedback and then move forward. But that's just my two cents. I don't know. Other people on the committee may have different thoughts on that, but that's what I was looking for assistance from the committee with.
Well, that that doesn't sound too scary. I can do that.
Yeah. And I wasn't advocating against Ms. McDonald or Spitzer, just to, Ms. Spitzer, just to be clear, it just, I think having that angle is going to be really helpful.
But I I appreciate that. If if Mr. Harrington, if you're willing to do that, I think that would be fantastic, because also it's a, you know, bringing, bringing that insight into the building committee will be helpful for the building as well. So Ms. Spitzer and Mr. Harrington, are you our working group?
Sure.
Thank you both.
I'll be in touch with you and we'll get some dates on the sched, uh, the dates on the calendar and and get to work. Not tonight, though, Mr. Harrington. I think rest of the night I'm going to take off after this.
Great. Any, any final thoughts before we move on? Okay. Thank you. Um, okay. Next up, we have, um, sibling policy for students in specialized programs. Um, and it's just a reminder for um, for ourselves, as well as for folks watching at home. Um, this came up as a topic of conversation that we wanted to explore. Um, as given that we reassessed our enrollment policy for siblings in the Comen- Comenantis program. And part of our, um, rationale and support for making that change in the Comenantis enrollment policy was because of the value that we place on having siblings um, in this, in their family in the same school community. Um, and so one of our takeaways from that was that we wanted to come back and and sort of explore um, uh, what our sibling policy is for students that are in the specialized programs, particularly the siblings who, um, of students who are not attending their, um, that school with which in their catchment area. Um, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Morris, and we have some other guests, um, uh, who are joining us today.
Yep. And so thank you, Dr. Brady and Ms. Smith for, uh, being here tonight. And, you know, I think what I'm going to ask Dr. Brady to do, um, we just brought up, you know, she raised some really good questions, uh, and, uh, to maybe help frame the discussion, you know, again, I wouldn't anticipate anyone voting on anything tonight. So I think it's really purely an exploratory conversation, just to set the sort of what we're hoping to do tonight. Um, but as we talked about it internally, um, you know, just longly, we we are empathetic to the, uh, conversation and empathetic to the situation of families who may have kids in multiple schools. We're also seeing, you know, the the deeper we dug, the more we recognize some real differences from the Comenantis piece as a um, to the specialized program piece. And I think just want to highlight some of those and then maybe have framed the discussion. So Dr. Brady, would you mind sharing just some of the the questions that we talked about? Um, and I think hopefully that'll help generate the conversation. But before you do, actually, I want to just slow down uh, and just talk about, we have three specialized programs at the K to six level. We have the Building Blocks Program, and that's located at Fort River School. We have the Ames Program, uh, and the Building Box Program, I should say, is for students who, um, needs in the social emotional, primarily in the social emotional area, uh, require a separate setting. Uh, the Ames Program is also located at Fort River, and that's for students in the autism spectrum who have, uh, generally pretty high access to the academic curriculum. And then we have the I L C Program, which is located at Wildwood for students with multiple or complex disabilities. Um, and in some ways that, uh, is often on average, our most substantially separate program of three. Um, everything's individual, so that doesn't apply to every student, but that's, you know, the the quick rundown. And so the question is, um, if students are in the program, their siblings currently attend their homeschool wherever the catchment area is. And so, uh, sorry for a delay, but I thought it was helpful just to provide that context. Um, that we had some questions about how this could work, how it would work, and and a couple scenarios that we wanted to um, share with the committee. So I'll pass it over to Dr. Brady, who can lead us in that that aspect.
Sure. So, um, thank you for inviting me to join for this, because I do think it's a really important topic to revisit periodically. Sometimes we just have our routines that we are used to and um, we forget to kind of step back and look at what we're doing and why we're doing it and if it still makes sense anymore. So, um, so one of the things when, um, Dr. Morris, um, talked to me about this, I just thought about, gee, some of the things that I were sitting in your seat as school committee that I may want to have kind of as thinking points as you explore what makes sense to do for this. So, um, and and I will just start this, because my thinking points are going to say, if we do change from what our current practices, what are some of the maybe unintended things that might get complicated? So, um, so before I go to those, I just want to say that I really see the value of families being had, being able to have their children in the same schools. Um, I think elementary I think elementary schools especially, they become a home, like a home away from home for children and their families, and there's a really genuine sincere connection. And it's hard, it's hard if families are trying to be connected to two different home away from home. So I want to just kind of be right out there saying, I appreciate the challenge. I think if anybody here has had the experience of having children in multiple levels of school, some people have had a child in elementary, middle and high school all at the same time. I think you can sit and say, oh, I know what that's like, because it's hard to find yourself connected to all those settings at the same time. So I just want that as background information. Now, as, as you think and you want to explore whether or not it's possible or it might be worth considering to have a sibling of a student who has, by their IEP team, decided that a specialized program is where they need to be. I think some of the things that kind of come to my mind right away is, so if a child, let's, I'm just going to use a second grader for an example, who might be in Wildwood as their homeschool, their IEP team says they need to be in Ames, they would switch to Fort River. If they have a sibling who is older, so let's say the sibling is already in fourth or fifth grade, like, that gets more complicated. It's not an incoming younger sibling who would maybe be joining where their sibling is, it's in a specialized program. But that person, that other older child could already be well attached to their homeschool. So I think, thinking about, gee, how would that work in those considerations? And then some of the other things is, what if there's more than one sibling? So, I mean, we have families that, you know, have multiple children, they have four or five children. They might have twins, you know, there's a variety of things. And when you begin to think of shifting potentially a number of different siblings, just enrollment in schools, kind of the fluctuation of how many kids are in a grade level and how many sections are needed, those kind of situations become very real, practical considerations that you could watch a grade level that's balanced at a nice number of students in each section just get toppled unexpectedly. And, and I think we all see what the importance is of enrollment and what our grade level capacities are. The other thing, and I think this is something that maybe not everybody is aware of, but when an IEP team makes the decision to have a student and proposes and a family agrees for their child to go into a specialized program, the, the idea is that that child at that time needs that level of programming and services. And it's not something that's a one-way road. Sometimes that child makes progress and their level of service and programming may not need to remain that way. So then the student in the program is able to return to their homeschool. So if their sibling has moved with them, like, does that other, does that other child have to change back and forth? So you see, it's like an onion, you start peeling it away and going, oh, this, this can get very complicated. And not in special ed, you know, we make individual decisions all the time. I always say the I in IEP is most important. However, when you're planning a school and planning for the district, focusing on the I all the time, it isn't really possible to make plans come to fruition as they're hoped to be. And then one of the things that I've seen in my time here at the district is there are times because of enrollment that a specialized program has moved. Now, that's been very complicated to do, but, and it's not something that's done easily. But at one point, both Ames and Building Blocks was not, were not in Fort River. So, and that, the Ames Program moved from Wildwood to Fort River. I just, I remember that because it was during the time that I'd been here. And so that's, that's a nut, that's challenging enough for the students that are in the program. However, then if you attach siblings, it becomes even more complicated. So those are some of just the kind of the pieces that I just encourage you to think about as you grapple with this. And then as I'm looking at Mr. Harrington, I'm just, I don't want to forget, one of the really practical things is transportation. So I, our department does an amazing job at getting children to the different places and utilizing vans when needed for specialized transportation. We don't have space, it's just a practical consideration on the vans where specialized transportation is taking place, to put siblings on that as well. It's just that, that, that would be not able to be done. So then what happens to those siblings? How do they get from when they live outside of their, when they're going to go to a school outside of their neighborhood school? How does transportation manage those routes like that? So, again, no answers, just wanting to point out to you the complexity of the discussion and the decision-making that you have in front of you. So, and again, just to give you a ballpark number, and Ms. Smith might have a better idea of the details of this, but I think in the programs, we are often just collectively, when we talk about Building Blocks, Ames and ILC together, a census of those three programs is typically at least at about 30, sometimes a little bit more. So Ms. Smith's shaking her head if you can't see that. So when you add one or more siblings to that, you can see how when you begin to add that up, enrollment in schools could really begin to fluctuate substantially, so.
Yeah, if I could try to summarize, thank you, Faye, for sharing that. It's weird, the words are going at a different pace than video, so I'm getting thrown off by Faye. But, um, not by Faye herself, but by the gap in the video and the audio. So, you know, I think for us, one of the challenges, just to summarize, one is a real logistical transportation challenge, because students wouldn't be taking the same transportation to get to the school of siblings. And, and so that, you know, from a family perspective, might mean there's, you know, a bus that's, it's expanding, significantly expanding the transportation network that we currently have. Or doing a multi-trip, which is what we do for Comenantes, so students go to the school, then take an additional bus to the school their sibling would be at. And just from a family perspective, it means, you know, kids are being picked up at the same house at different times by different modes of transportation. So, you know, there, there's a cost aspect, because it would be some resources dedicated to it. And then there's the piece of the transiencey that not every student stays in their program. And so you start affecting not just that child, but then the siblings. And I think that, you know, the thing for me, and I know this is sounding really negative, like we're not in favor of it. It's just the more we dug in, the more challenges we faced, was that Comenantes, the idea was that the students would not just be really in the same school, it's that they were in the same program. That there was a programmatic benefit to having students learning Spanish and English simultaneously. And for all but students who have a Spanish language background, the, the, the entry point is kindergarten. So it's predictable and reliable. Whereas when students enter specialized programs is all over the map. It could be in March 10th in next year, and it doesn't happen as neatly as the Comenantes program. And so, you know, we just, we recognize the, the level of limitations. I will say personally, I'm very empathetic to the idea around the sibling piece with specialized programs. I think realizing that in all the logistics and resources pieces, make it a really daunting challenge, you know? And, and if that's where the committee and community feel, then, then we'll do, we'll start itemizing both the costs and resources that need to be dedicated. But we did want to be explicit about some of the challenges that, that really are educational. Like, would you want to change multiple kids on March 10th next year if one child goes to a new school? And what happens when that student, you know, we do have students who exit the programs, and that's a one, those are wonderful success stories. And, and they do happen not once in a blue moon, but that, you know, they happen more regularly than that. So, you know, I think that we're seeing it essentially different from Comenantes. And we'll stop talking, because I know it's just been Dr. Brady and myself primarily, who've been talking for quite some time. But, you know, we did want to, you know, let you know, we have done a lot of thinking about this. And, you know, we, we didn't notice all the knots in the plan until we started, and thinking about it, until we started getting, you know, deeper into it and recognizing some of the real challenges that would emerge. All that being said, I'm highly personally and professionally empathetic to the situation that having specialized programs sort of creates for families with multiple children, being part of multiple school communities, you know, it really limits the, the parent connection to the school when you're, have more than one school. And that happens sometimes with kids with elementary and high school students, but it really happens when kids are both in elementary school, siblings are both in elementary school, and it's multiple PGOS, multiple, you know, all those other factors. So none of it's coming from a lack of empathy, it's coming with, you know, how do we get from point A to point B? And recognizing that, you know, our partner schools have these policies, and the more we dug into it, perhaps we're recognizing why the schools primarily do that. And it's not because of lack of interest or effort, it's, it's some of the, the real challenges with it. So I'm really going to stop talking now. We're doing well and being on time, and I'm, last two topics, I'm starting to ruin that. So I apologize, Ms. McDonald, who had us doing, going really well until I started getting involved. But we're really open to any comments or questions or feedback from the committee.
I have a, maybe a super quick question. When you, when you talk about the students that sort of move into a program and they might sort of progress out of the program, are they required to leave that school on the moment that they are progressing out? Is there, are they, you know, enabled to finish out the school year? Are they given the option to stay? Let's say they've been in the program since, you know, kindergarten or first grade, and they're now in fourth grade. Do they have the option to stay in that school? Or are they required to go back to their homeschool?
So I think it's, it's an, we've, we've done it both, multiple ways. You know, I think for most part, you know, I think one of the hard things talking tonight is that we're talking about three really distinct programs. You're, I'm not saying this in response to your comment, I'm responding to how I described it. You know, for some students, if they complete and no longer need the services of a specialized program, they can't wait to get back to their former school. We've positive examples of the friends I was with for those grade levels, or I don't want to take the van, or, you know, there's a million reasons why I want to go to school with kids in my neighborhood, right? There's a lot of reasons why students might want to return to their quote unquote homeschool, but we have other scenarios where we do think it's in the student's best interest to maintain the school they're in. So it's, it's not a hard and fast rule. We try to work with the family and the team to make the best determination possible. And we've seen it work both ways, frankly. So it, it is something that we, it's, it's open, but it's, you know, it's, it's very individualized.
Ms. Spitzer.
Okay. Well, first off, thanks so much for, for the presentation. A couple of clarifying questions and then a, a comment. So, and I, you know, just forgive me for my ignorance of some of the details of the programs, because I, you know, you guys did a great job of presenting, but I'm, I'm not as intimately aware with kind of the logistics of each program. But it sounds like to me, and correct me if I'm wrong, but potentially the ILC program at Wildwood is one where it might be more predictable that somebody is going to need to be in that program, and it may be much less likely that they'll be likely to leave that program. Is that accurate or?
I, I think our past history aligns with your comment, yeah. I mean, I think, yeah, everything's individualized, but I think on average, I would completely agree that the likelihood of students entering ILC at a preschool is higher than the students entering some of the other specialized programs. But, but, you know, it's not a hard and fast rule, but in general, yeah.
Okay. Well, the, the only reason I ask is that, and, and this isn't a fault, but I, I'm thinking back to when we had the presentation, and I, forgive me, it might have been CPAC, but it was a parents group who had kind of considered, what would it mean if we thought about positioning the programs, you know, instead of having them clustered in specific schools, if we had them distributed more evenly throughout the district, so that the students who were in those programs would have the opportunity to stay with their siblings? So it's kind of like the reverse side of this, instead of having the students all have their siblings move, it would be kind of like moving the programs to the, the place where the students were located. And I think one of the really interesting things coming out of that presentation was just that through conversation, the parents presented a case for, for actually keeping the programs the way we had it set up, where they're specialized. And, and I don't, I don't think that was, and this has been, feels like ages ago, it was probably two or three years ago now. Given the pandemic, everything pre-pandemic seems like it was a different life. But, um, but I thought it was really interesting, because through that conversation, and it seemed like folks had come into it, I think with a bias to maybe want to keep, you know, find a way to get their program located in their school, but then through the conversation had come up on the other end of it. So I think you have a very good presentation of all of the ways in which this is difficult logistically, and I think there are really compelling reasons. But what I didn't hear tonight was much from the perspective of the families and what their preferences are. And I'm wondering if there's a way, I'd feel a lot better, you know, about this if, if we had heard a little bit from that perspective. And, and, and you guys have so much on your plates, and I'm not sure parents need another survey, but I'm wondering if there's a way to, you know, maybe, in, you know, and, and I think each family is probably unique. I'm not sure the, you know, the best way to do this, but I'm curious if there's been a lot of demand. You know, we, we were thinking of it in equity standpoint, but maybe there's not the demand that we think there might be from these families. But if, I could also see the demands for each family varying across the programs. So I'm looking at Mr. Demling as our CPAC person, so I'm wondering if you have any insight on this, or if you might have ideas about, about that.
Yeah, and I'll also add that another committee that we all sit on is, is hearing a, a report and meeting with the CPAC leadership at an upcoming meeting. So it's a great opportunity to discuss that. Mr. Demling, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll briefly adjust Ms. Spitzer's question before I chair a larger comment. But, but yeah, so this, this occasionally comes up at CPAC meetings, questions a, around that and what the policy is and what the flexibility is. I think it would be great to, to follow up with CPAC about this topic specifically. I, I think inviting Dr. Morris and, and Dr. Brady, Dr. Brady's always at CPAC meetings, but to have an unrushed conversation where we let, CPAC has enough time to let parents know that this topic is coming up, and that if they would like to have a discussion about it, a really in-depth, robust discussion, they can show up to the CPAC meeting, and then we can bring it up to the CPAC meeting. I think, I think you're spot on about, about, you know, if, if we're trying to balance cost benefit here, right? And, you know, we, we heard about the costs, but what are the benefits of, 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 you know, sibling changes? But that, that's, that would be an advisable thing, I think.
Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I just want to mention that there was enrollment working group that Dr. Kristen Rodriguez facilitated, and there was a special ed group, and we did survey families as part of that. Now, families change, that was a couple of years ago, to your point, Ms. McDonald. So none of that is in opposition to the comments Mr. Demling or others made. But I do want to just note that we did survey families in specialized programs at that point in time, and, and that's, data was analyzed, and was a little surprising to us. We, we anticipated, I, I anticipate, I shouldn't say we, I anticipated some different responses than what I saw from the results of that survey. But, but again, that was multiple years ago. Families and programs change, right? Kids graduate, go up to the middle school, new families come, and, and none of that is in opposition to engaging CPAC. But I just would want to note that if you go back, you know, that, that surveying of specialized program families was done with, you know, I know Ms. Smith was on that group, there were some family volunteers, I can't remember everybody, it was, you know, pre-pandemic, right? So it all sort of blends together, but I know that there was a survey done and analyzed as part of that report. And we could see if we can try to dig that up to be able to share it back, because it's probably been a while since anybody here looked at that.
Dr. Brady?
So I think looking at back at that report is a good idea, and I will support and feel very connected to what Mr. Demling is saying. I think CPAC, certainly I would want to get a voice, not from just, sometimes we have some small groups at CPAC, but to try to get a larger group of people to talk about this. Ms. Spitzer, you're right, a number of years ago, CPAC did, we did put a group together, and they really did try to figure out what might be better. And I think they, they expected to wind up thinking that they were going to change their recommendation and wound up not doing that. So, but I, but I know from, just from being at CPAC with families on a monthly basis, that I think by all accounts, I think I'm accurate to say, the emotional response is that families accurate to say the emotional response is that families want their kids in the same school, they absolutely do. I, and it's, it's not just costs that I'm talking about, I think it's logistics of when there's older children or when children exit the program, what happens to the siblings? And I don't know if there is a way to do it, but other than getting parents' voice in this, I I also think sometimes we forget to try to get the voice of students. I often find that when I listen to students, they know much more or have a perspective very different than we all do as adults. So I I don't quite know the logistics of how to do that, but I think, you know, certainly I don't know if we'd ask a kindergartner, but but an older elementary child or a child who's already in middle school or high school that has a sibling in a specialized program for their thoughts on what their experience was. Because I like to make decisions based upon students, that's not saying parents aren't important. There, we do want to value the parent perspective and the student voice would be really helpful for me to hear.
I I wholeheartedly support the, I think you're, you're, and Ms. Demling, I saw your hand, but the, you know, as we were listening to sort of the many, the many hurdles and and challenges and, you know, that we would face, were we to to consider this? I I think, you know, that sense, well, we were considering it because from our own committee perspective of of where we as a committee place value. And I I do share the the desire that we'd need to really at this point here, if this is a concern and a desire from from families that we should push to sort of figure our way through some of these challenges and issues if there is a way, way through some of those. Yeah. Mr. Demling?
So, yeah, so so my my general take on this is that I I don't see the complications and disruptions that have been identified so far as being automatically prohibitive to to doing this. I think this is a cost benefit analysis and it's the cost, financial and 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 planning and organizational cost, that the enrollment disruption as as students move out, as Dr. Brady itemized, versus the the benefit to to the families. And 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 that that's what I see as as the balance here. And so so this is why it's good, it will be good to reach out to CPAC, get a better idea of what that that benefits to families, you know, a couple of couple of points, you know, one is is that that enrollment working group wasn't necessarily looking at the sibling policy for those special ed programs, it was looking at what does it mean for the programs to be centrally located versus in your own building? So which is, it's, it's a nuance, but it's, but it's, it's a different, it's a different question. And 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 really, I I come back to the principle of, you know, we should be as much as possible empowering parents to be making the choices about what's best for their family. Right? And that that's not necessarily both kids in the same school in all cases, you know, so just for my personal example, you know, I had a a son at an ILC and I'm, and I'm in the Crocker catchment area. And then I had other kids at Crocker. Now, I didn't have the choice to send all my kids to Crocker because ILC wasn't a Crocker and I didn't have the choice to send all my kids to Wildwood because 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 of the sibling policy. But I don't, I don't know if if I would have. I I can, I can think of different situations which it, you know, I may have decided it was, it was appropriate to to send the kids to Crocker who were Crocker, you know, there's, it's, it's a complicated thing to be a sibling of a of a child with special needs, you know, and and do you and especially when they're younger and you're making choices for them as they're just making friend groups, often your friend groups are are the kids on your street and the kids on your street all go to the local school, right? So do you want to be taking them away from from there? It's, it's complicated. And I'm just scratching the surface of what I remember years ago was was my situation, to say nothing and so a parent in a different situation, a different sibling combo might make a different choice, you know, the point being is that in ideal world, we we this the parents to be empowered to say what's best for my kids. Right? And it 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 may be the day that the cost to make that happen is high from either just a dollars and cents point of view or that we can't work out transportation or 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 the the impact balancing enrollment at the schools. I I tend to think that 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 it's it's closer than what what maybe initially could it to be tonight? I mean, we were really motivated to make Comanates work and and we made it work. And and we we increased transportation in order to make it work, as as we know, we have, you know, you you buy the same bus to Wildwood and then you take the the, you know, the flyer to wherever. It it, this stuff can be done. I'm not trying to say it's simple, you know, where this will is a way. And and I'm not saying that if we don't do this, we don't care. Really not trying to say that. But but I do want to, you know, pull it back a little bit and say this is about benefit and and it may be the cost is too high. But I but I do think that we really have to be a little bit more articulate and clear about what what benefits are and and to me, particularly for for parents that are already experiencing a high level of disruption by sending their child to a specialized program outside their catchment area. It's worthy of of our explanation.
Thank you for for sharing that. I I'm I'm less familiar with our programs in in our districts, so again, so I appreciate the the thing that I I'm being the younger sibling of somebody who was in special ed her entire life until high school and even in high school, we were sent to different schools. So I know that personally and, you know, part of me, if you had asked me as a kid, did I want to be in the same school as my sister? Not sure I would have said yes. At the same time, sort of, there were many, many moments where, you know, I, we moved schools and and towns a lot and you know, just from my personal experience, I know sort of the value, we we overlapped and shared a school for half of the year. And that was a totally different experience for me as a kid and that was in middle school than than any other, any other experience. And you know, as adults, she, we look back and we talked about it and you know, she, she really noticed it and really, you know, it really impacted her experiences as well. So for me, it is, it is really, really important to sort of include that perspective as as we think through. So we think through like, I I share Mr. Demling's opinion, it's like, yeah, there there are hard issues and it's really helpful to understand that. And that's not a reason to stop, it's a reason to make sure that we're weighing and and really getting sort of what is the perspective of the of the families that are impacted by this and as as you, you always say, Dr. Brady, that, you know, the I in IEP stands for individual and I'm sure for all of the families that are involved, they're just as individualized as their students too and sort of what their needs are, but I would love to hear more sort of from the from the CPAC families.
Just say one more thing. I think that just listening to all of you kind of share some initial thoughts about this. I think this is exactly why when we have practices that are in place, how we owe it to ourselves as a community to revisit those practices periodically because they may have made perfect sense and, you know, at one time, that's the direction we went and I think that this is one, there's probably multiple other practices we have that we just get used to them and this is what we do. And so I I just kind of put this in my mind as a trigger to say, let's think about what all of our practices are and find a way to routinely kind of bring them to the surface again to say, let's examine them. Why are they where they are? How did we get to this place and do we need to revisit it? And and that's what I think I'm hearing is an important thing to do at this point. So I appreciate you. It might have come to this discussion right now because of what happened with Comanates, but I'm glad that that happened because it is an important topic to revisit.
There's no more discussion. Thank you so much for for that. And I and I love that framing also, Dr. Brady, and in terms of like always, always coming back and circling back and questioning ourselves about our decisions and our, on our processes and just pressure checking them every once in a while and I I'm hearing though is also is the next step that we will, Mr. Demling is the sort of liaison with the CPAC, will coordinate with them to, a way to sort of get that discussion going. And that, thank you. Excellent. If there, if there's no more ads on that one from folks looking around. Okay. Great. Well, thank you so much for for joining us this evening and happy that we were relatively on time tonight too for you. Great. So next up is our superintendent evaluation timeline and instrument. And I'll turn that over to Ms. Spitzer to
So the the subcommittee that I chair for the evaluation met last week. And the timeline that we are proposing is that we have the instrument ready by May 18th in time for the the regional meeting that's going to happen then. So it's going to be, this is a, I'm wondering if we could vote on it all at one meeting, find a way for the maybe added, or maybe this is blading too much into agenda planning, but in the past, we voted on the instrument. This time it's going to be identical to the one for the region. So I don't know if there's a way to just tack on to a region meeting, perhaps a vote on the instrument. It might streamline things a little bit and make it so that we don't need to tack it on to another meeting, but perhaps we could look at that with the agenda planning piece. But we're getting support from, I want to thank Sasha Figuera for her help and the plan, I think, is for us all to come together on the twenty Tuesday, June 29th for the actual evaluation. And I think the presentation of artifacts is going to happen again at a joint meeting where Dr. Morris will present to all three committees that he reports to on that same evening. So there's not a lot of updates. But we're making progress.
Yeah. I'm I can connect with the region chair to coordinate that. Any questions from the others? No? Dr. Morris, did you want to say something or? No, okay. Great. Well, thanks for that update. And when we get to agenda planning, we can look at, oh, well, that is next. And I think yeah, I have that here. Do folks want me to share my screen or?
While you're sharing it, if it's okay, you know, Ms. Spitzer, there is a region meeting with this on the agenda next week and, you know, I have no concerns about adding that item to be an AMERST item as well, as long as the chair does not, that certainly feels appropriate and fine to me.
Yep. Okay. So our next Yep. So as as Dr. Morris said, we have on the 18th, the regional school committee is meeting to look at that the evaluation tool. And yeah, I don't see an issue that we'd sort of make it a joint meeting for that particular topic. The, we could, well, no. Then our next AMERST meeting again will be that joint meeting on the 15th, specifically for the artifacts presentation and the return to school guidance from DESI. And then the 29th is another joint, three-way joint meeting for the evaluation review and and vote. And I guess the question there's a lot of joint meetings, so I I don't know if there's any AMERST only topics that we need to that we need to sort of think about in that timeframe, sort of looking at closing out the year. Ms. Spitzer?
Earlier, we talked about a preschool report being available soon. Is that an AMERST only topic? Or is that there? I'm sorry.
It's not there, but it is an AMERST topic that we should add. And I don't know if, you know, the eighth of the 22nd, maybe we have an AMERST meeting to talk about that sixth grade piece specific to AMERST. And then also the preschool piece.
Do, since we don't have a meeting on the calendar right now, do I mean, we don't have to answer it right now, but thinking about, is there any preference for the eighth or the 22nd from Dr. Morris?
My only concern is that I don't know if the report will be done by the eighth for preschool, but I am very confident it will be done by the 22nd. So you know, in some ways, I'd almost like to do the I don't want to make two meetings, but I, you know, one I'd love to be on the eighth and one I'd love to be on the 22nd, but I don't think I'm going to do that to myself or anybody else on the call, but you know, I think by the 22nd, certainly the preschool report will be done. I just, I would hate to have that feel rushed and or not even get to it on the fifteenth. I don't know if people are okay with the 22nd the date to come back to for that.
Well, and I wonder, depending on what the other topics, joint topics are and region only topics are, you know, if that feels like a short meeting, it could be that there's a pre a separate half hour AMERST only meeting.
I actually think that's, from my perspective, I think that's a great idea because certainly the preschool report would be done and I do think if we do what we've done for the last any number of years, the artifact presentation is very brief. And the return to school guidance, I actually don't think will be that. I think are there some questions you have, but is most of that going to be pretty predictable, what's in their guidance? I I think it probably will be, so I like that idea best.
Okay. Anything, Ms. Spitzer?
I'm just thinking for planning purposes for the summer, I'm not saying tonight, but it would be really nice to have any potential summer meetings, even the ones that are happening in August on the, I'm just personally, I'm trying to plan out, I'm actually not going to be in town on the 29th, I may need to, I'm hoping I'll have internet access. I'm going to be, but it would just be good to get any of the key meetings that we're going to have over the summer, to the extent that we can know ahead of time, just get those Tuesdays or whatever day of the week they are blocked off sooner rather than later as we plan vacations if we're lucky enough to.
Would you see that as an AMERST or a joint conversation?
Um, I don't know if there are any AMERST specific top, I'm just thinking if we decide to do say engagement around the topic of, you know, if we decide this summer, we need to strike on something like moving the middle school or say something comes up. Who knows? But maybe Joe, I I could see it being either. I don't know.
I could also. I think typically, you know, in another committee, we talked about a retreat and that's typically done at the region level, not at the AMERST level, but there there, there could be, I I, there's probably some AMERST only topics in terms of planning those meetings that yeah, we can noodle that and come back to that. But I think that's a that's a, that's a important add. It would be great to close out the June already knowing when we're going to be starting back up again and what that looks like. And and what, if any, meetings are going to be happening over the summer. Yes. Any any other thoughts on that or on the agendas? We're keeping some people awake, I see. Okay. Excellent. Well, as always, if if anything occurs to you in the next next, you know, few days, weeks, whatever, just send me an email. We have a warrant report and I do have I think three. So give me just a second. Okay. I, Allison McDonald, authorized by my signature to payables and the amount of Allison McDonald authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $18,022.02 for a warrant dated April 30th, 2021. This includes general fund expenses of $7,102.46, revolving fund expenses of $9,976.56, grant fund expenses of $250, and Article 14 funds of $696. And I signed that on April 28th. I, Allison McDonald authorized payroll in the amount of $640,978.04 dated May 5th, 2021, and I signed that on May 4th, 2021. And last, I authorize, I, Allison McDonald authorized by my signature to payables in the amount of $185,983.97 for a warrant dated May 7th, 2021. This includes general fund expenses of $103,137.58, grant fund expenses of $30,722.20, COVID relief grant funds of $990, state Corona prevention fund in the amount of $34,979.60, behavioral and mental health funds of $6,727.88, student activities of $881.65, Article 13 funds in the amount of $8,545.06. And I signed that on May 11th. And that is all that I have there. Um, I don't believe we have any gifts. Nope. Okay. So I will make a motion that we, I move that we adjourn as our second.
Second.
Moved by McDonald, second by Spencer. There's no discussion, so we move to a roll call vote. Mr. Demling?
Come on, guy.
Mr. Harrington?
Harrington, I.
Ms. Lord?
Lord, I.
Ms. Spitzer?
Spitzer, I.
And McDonald, I. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.